All right, so, everybody ready?
Yep.
All right, we'll call our council meeting to order. Welcome to Freeport Town Council Meeting number zero eight dash two-two. Town Council Chambers at Thirty Main Street, and the time is six o'clock. Welcome, we're going to find out who's here and then start on our agenda. Counselor Pillsbury.
Present.
Counselor Fornier.
Here.
Counselor Lawrence.
Here.
Counselor Daniele.
Here.
Counselor Bradley.
Here.
And the Vice Chair, John Egan, is here. Chair Dan Pilch is on vacation this week and is excused from the meeting. First thing we'll do is our pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm loving all the daylight at our six o'clock start time. So, we have a three-page agenda, but much of it is just setting some public hearings for two weeks from now, at the beginning of May. We will have our final conversation on our capital improvement plan, and then we have a couple of items on other business. Not a whole lot of action items tonight, so I think we'll be able to get through setting the public hearings. Again, we're not discussing those matters, but setting the public hearings, and then we'll have plenty of time for the capital program and for those two items at the end for other business. So, let's get going. Our next order of business on the agenda is to waive the reading of the minutes of meeting number zero seven dash two-two, held on April five, 2022, and accept the minutes as printed. So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, any comments or corrections, edits? Thank you, Chris Wolf, for the detailed minutes. All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and have all those in favor of adopting the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Counselor Bradley abstains.
That's only because I just got back from vacation. My internet didn't work all day, I didn't have any of this material, so I haven't read them.
Okay. Our next item is announcements, and I have a couple, and then we'll go down and see who else has a few things to announce for April nineteen, 2022. The Public Works Department would like to ask residents to please contact the Freeport Public Works Department to check the roads right-of-way before planting trees, building stone walls, or wood fence. The right-of-way is well beyond the pavement in many, many areas of the town, so if you're planting something near the road and you're wondering if it's in the right-of-way, give a call to the Public Works and they'll be able to square that up for you real quick. The Freeport Library will be open again on Fridays, starting this week. I believe this Friday is the, what is it, the twenty-second? Am I that right? No, twenty-third. So, happily, the library opens again
Twenty-second, you were right.
This week, on Fridays. Any other announcements from other members of the council? Counsel Bradley.
I was away and was unable to attend the Saturday event with the public on revisioning. I wondered if anybody has any things to say about that, how it went, what? I don't, I just.
I can give a very brief synopsis, it was very well attended. I think the sign-up sheet had over a hundred names, and I would say not everybody that came signed in, so some estimate of possibly a hundred and twenty-five people.
Wow.
It was packed for at least two and a half hours out in the hallway. There was a video presentation in here, because it rained right in the middle of it.
Yeah.
So, we could not have it on the front lawn. Lots of input, there were lots of participatory manners for the public to vote and sort of give their opinion about the many numerous boards that were up about different ideas, different design concepts, having to do with buildings, having to do with roads, having to do with public interface between pedestrian, bike, and vehicles. So, there were an ample amount of green dots and red dots, that kind of thing. So, I have not seen a summary yet of the information. We did not have a workshop last Tuesday, because we had just had that big event on the Saturday. So, I think the summary of the inputs from that are still forthcoming.
Okay.
Soon, because the principal wraps up at the beginning of May.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I thought it was a great event.
Thanks.
Very happy to be there. Anybody else comment on that? All right. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the next item on our agenda is information exchange, chance for councilors to talk about input from constituents, committee reports, updates on various activities in between council meetings. Anybody have any items to share? Counsel Fornier.
Had a local business come up and thank us for eliminating the visualist license, so I think it was a step in the right direction, so I was very pleased to hear that.
That's great, I've heard the same.
I have another que, you know, I haven't been here, so I'm trying to catch up. I wondered if the earmark, how the earmarking went for the sewer district?
I don't, I haven't heard back anything. I'm assuming the submission went in, but I don't believe that we're going to hear back as part of the process for a few weeks.
But the petition did go in, the earmark petition went in.
Yes. I didn't, I mean, I didn't see the final, a final report or anything, so.
Yeah, we only, I wrote a letter of support on, over two weeks, three of them, for all three of the earmark requests, so Brett and, I think Lee put it in, but Brett from FEDC coordinated that and got our, the town's official sponsor letter to the delegations and all that, so. I'm assuming it went in, everything was in on schedule, but I think Lee would have to confirm that, whoever sent it from the district, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question for Chris. We have a request from the Sustainability Committee to appoint a replacement for a resignation of one of their members, and I'm told that there's an application into you, so when could the Appointments Committee convene briefly to be able to make that official action and get that person appointed?
So, Megan Shore has sent me a letter of interest, and I forwarded her an application, so I haven't actually received the application yet, but we can set an Appointments Committee meeting any, anytime.
Maybe if there's a possibility, Chip and Ed and I are that committee, if we could meet sometime before May third so that we could have a committee recommendation come forward for the May third meeting?
Before May third, we'll do it.
That work for folks? Great. Thank you. Any other items for information exchange? Okay, moving right along. Next item is the Town Manager's Report. Peter?
See if I can do this in three sentences, counting this one. The event on the Saturday, visioning event that Ed referenced, included an enormous amount of turnout, but I think we would be remiss not to mention our all-star dog wrangler for the town of Freeport. Counselor Daniele helped restore some law and order out there in the streets and get some, and a nice passerby, the two of them got some dogs back into the back of a truck, so thank you for that. And our Public Works Department called me today and reported that they are hap, they thought some folks in the council might like to hear this, and the public, that they are excited to be moving, testing out some electronic power equipment, electric power equipment, as opposed to two-stroke and four-stroke mobile stuff. I know that they've always gotten questions from councilors about when are we moving to electric vehicles, but Earl called me and said, hey, we're, we're starting at least to move towards power equipment, trimmers, blowers, all that kind of stuff as it ages out, so they actually got their first, I would say, commercial-grade leaf blowers today that they're going to be trying out and getting everyone comfortable with it, and they've gotten some pretty good referrals from some of the contractors around town that have moved to rechargeable electric equipment, so it seems, yeah.
Do we recharge that equipment off our solar?
I mean, it comes from the grid, so technically it's eighty percent, you know, seventy percent dirty power sources, whatever the main grid is.
The main grid's actually pretty clean, but.
Well, John, do you have a breakout of that, because that would be the answer?
It's well over sixty-five percent renewables because of the hydro from Quebec.
Okay.
But the short answer is our electricity that we purchase is largely from the solar farm that we are invested in. It comes not directly to us, it goes up to the grid, and then we get the credits. So, we're offsetting our consumption with the solar production.
Okay, well, that's it. That's all I had, was that they're excited to move towards that, and they're constantly evaluating new equipment that comes out. This is a four-sentence.
Okay.
Constantly evaluating equipment that comes out, including electric vehicles, they're tests, they're looking at, and possibly in the next year or two, test-driving some at trade shows and things like that, I know that they've been watching, so.
I had a question, I think I know the answer, about the posting of roads, that's been.
It was lifted either last Monday or two Mondays ago, I can't remember the exact.
That's what I thought, because I hadn't seen the signs, somebody asked me.
When the orange signs go away, everything is good to go. And we do that typically in conjunction with the other towns around here, you'll notice they all disappear at about the same day or two. So, they try to make it so that delivery people, contractors, things like that, don't have to have eighteen different standards. They're kind of a block of coastal Cumberland County that all does them, posts them, and removes them together, so.
Okay.
Because the climate is the same, and the three-stall cycle is the same, so.
Can I ask you a question, Peter?
Absolutely.
So, I think it's great that the Public Works is moving away from some of the gas-powered equipment. Is that just their own doing, is that a push from the town? I mean, I would encourage us across the board, wherever we can do that, to keep looking at that, and I just didn't know if it was an official mandate or.
Yeah, both, I mean, they've heard, they've heard a couple years in a row now about, hey, when are we starting to move towards electric vehicles? But it's also their own doing that they've been talking with contractors, you know, their colleagues around the area, both Public Works and some of our landscaping and maintenance and construction people, who are early adopters, who have been using, you know, the electric lawn and garden stuff, essentially, the battery-powered stuff, for a year or two, and had really good experiences with it. So, I think the technology's gotten to the point, it's, it's starting to get over the hurdle. It's probably still not ripe for somebody who, for example, runs a chainsaw in the woods all day long, like has a lumberjack or a tree feller, but pretty much any casual use, it's, it's getting there. You know, where if you're using it for an hour or two at a time, then it can go on a charger, you can charge the batteries, and it's, it's not a constant-use, continuous thing, so, for example, a landscaper's probably not going to run a battery-powered zero-turn mower for twelve hours a day in the summertime, but if we're just doing an hour touch-up here or there, it makes a lot of sense for our people who are shifting jobs throughout the day to be doing that. So, they've heard feedback from some of the other contractors around town and people that they know who are using them had a good experience, so I think it's going to be a test period, they're probably going to buy a couple of each different tools that comes out and see what works and what doesn't, and it's not going to be all at once, just as stuff breaks, they'll replace it, they'll try out some electric stuff, so.
Can we make sure to just get some feedback as to how it's going? That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I love some data on that. Yeah, I mean, the homeowner-grade chainsaws can run for about forty-five minutes, and then it takes almost an hour to charge up batteries, so if you have a second set of batteries, gives you a chance to take a break and get a glass of water, but you can work pretty continuously all day.
The next one they're going to try out will be chainsaws, Earl told me, so, and that fits our work schedule pretty good, because their chainsaw use is limited to planned operations or emergency, kind of, there's a tree in the road thing.
Tree clearing, yeah.
They're not going to go out and clear five acres at a time, they're going to do one tree down across the road.
Need a permit for that.
And then drive, and then drive to the next site, so even in a situation like, you know, a windstorm situation like today, where they might have to run a chainsaw for a couple hours, they're moving around, they've got time to swap equipment, it's not just straight-through work, so it's a pretty good fit for most of their things, but, you know, if we could be the voice of, and I think that they will, they'll talk to their, you know, the other contractors around and, you know, push, hey, it's working good for us, you guys should consider it, so.
Okay.
Catching on, it's pretty cool to hear, so.
It is. That completes your report?
It does, Mr. Chair.
All right, our next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is a chance for members of the public to come to the podium for items that are not on our agenda. For items that are on the agenda, we ask that you wait till those items come up, but we love to hear public comment, and it's one of the best ways for communication, is for people to address us directly, so please come to the podium if you're interested.
How about that for timing, huh?
That's good timing, Bob.
Hello, everybody. I'm Bob Stevens, and a reporting member of the Freeport Climate Action Now Committee. First off, I want to thank you very much for the appropriation of money to help us get the farmers' market going again. That's the shot in the arm, the dollars that we needed, and we look forward to starting that. Let me tell you what else we're doing. We've got various groups working in, in areas on, on issues that concern to you and to the town. Transportation, trying to up the use of breeze. The housing group is hoping to put together a weatherization campaign. The, the Solar Action Group is learning from what took place up at MDI, a climate, the Thrive Group up there, significantly increased the numbers of homes that were able to proceed with solar panelization. We're looking for ways to make that affordable for those of folks in the community that don't have cash readily available, or perhaps financial capacity to borrow funds easily. So, those things are taking place, and we're, we're really happy with the way that the, the town planner and the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board are working with GP Gog to have them move ahead so that the town will be in a position to, to have a, a climate action plan proposed, something to work on by September, which, which means, as you guys know, holding public hearings, public meetings, adoption of goals, and your appointment of a, of a climate action coordinator. We see that there's going to be a lot of money available, we can't get to it. We think there's going to be a lot of things that you're going to want done in town that are going to be expensive, and we've got to be, you've got to be in a position to be able to request those, those funds. You know, other, other towns are, are moving ahead, we got to keep moving along with them. So, we're very, very interested in, in that, and, and really appreciate the actions that are being taken. And I guess I'm here to also get, get your thoughts, if you want to say any, tell us anything, and also, we're putting together a, 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 a report of some sort, what, what we're doing, and I know you're all inundated with a lot of paper already, but you'll be getting, if you don't mind, a copy of that, so we can sort of keep you up to date. And again, we're coordinating with the S of A B, I think we've got a lot of good people on both sides working together to the same aim, and hope we can continue to do so.
Thanks very much, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your energy, it's great.
Good evening, my name's Peter Anzweeny from South Freeport. I just want to ask the council, I know last week you've had, you had a presentation from the state speaker about the LD two thousand and three. So, the question is still, I've, I've looked at the presentation that was delivered to all of you, and the question still is, so, in, in the Village Residential, for instance, just as a specific example, we currently have restrictions around the requirement for square footage associated with a mo, a home and a second home. So, the question becomes, if, if the state actually passes this bill, does that mean that the council and the Planning Board or the Zoning Board will go in and eliminate all those kinds of requirements within the structure? So, because right now, in South Freeport at least, you need thirty thousand square feet to build an in-law apartment. So, you know, that's, that's the original zoning that was put in, you know, twenty-some years ago. So, the question becomes, you know, how does this, how do you take what the state is doing and incorporating it into what the town needs to do? So, that's really my, my question.
I can give you a brief answer, and then we can talk some more later offline, Peter. The short answer is, no, it's not going to require or, or demand that Freeport rezone to accommodate what may or may not have been mentioned in the bill. The, the language in the bill is to allow a homeowner who is restricted by zoning to only have one dwelling unit per lot to add an accessory dwelling unit or a second unit. But otherwise, and it's right in the bill, all of the other local zoning and setback and water and sewer requirements are required to be upheld. So, the state is not reaching over anything other than giving property owners the right to petition their community to add a dwelling unit, if otherwise, everything else is in line. So, the, the local ordinance that you referred to, and I don't know about, I don't have the zones in my head, about whatever the setback is for square footage, whatever the requirements are, if it's not on public sewer, the distance from septic to well, the design of the septic system to be able to handle additional fixtures, toilets and sinks and all of those, all of that has to be met according to the local. And if all of it is met, then the town can't deny, just because the zoning says it's one dwelling unit per lot. That's the only, so the, the property owner is given the right to say, I'm going to put another unit here, they still have to comply with all of the other local zoning, utility connections, et cetera.
John, do you think we would? There we go, mic on. I think we would have to go and edit our ordinance to allow those uses, though, right? There will be, because I think that, that to put in two-family duplexes and allowed use, we have that everywhere, but I think we'd have to monkey around with the additional unit or the dup, or the ADU, accessory dwelling unit definition somewhat probably in most of our zones, so I don't know, I haven't.
Well, to outline and specify what it is, but it doesn't, the, the bill doesn't, doesn't require the town to permit an ADU over all of its other ordinances.
Absolutely, right.
Which is, can be confusing sometimes, because I know there's a perception that this is Augusta pushing something down on the communities.
But in, in the particular case that I've mentioned, so currently, I can't put an in-law apartment on my property because it's thirty thousand square foot requirement to have two, two-family situation. If ADU comes in and I meet all the, all the road restrictions, all the back, because that's my current property, so that means I can put another house or another apartment or something on my existing property. So, that means that the thirty, thirty thousand square foot requirement gets blown away.
Yeah, I believe so, let's, let's fact-check that before I tell you something that's legally binding, but I think what you're saying is right, that, that it, by right, you would now, a town or a city's not going to be able to prohibit you for that reason. We, there might be other things that are problematic, like you have to meet setbacks, you have to have lot coverage, everything that John mentioned, there may be reasons to rule you out, but I don't think lot, I think, let's, I'll look at it. Let's talk afterwards, yeah.
There was only one house in South Freeport that was actually a duplex.
Right, probably pre-existing or.
They were prior to the zoning that happened, after that happened. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Anyone else like to come forward? This is the public participation on non-agenda items.
It is now, I think it, in the time it took you to get down here, it's working perfectly now, so. But you're correct, there was, there was a video feed problem, they were trying to reset it, so.
And I legally made it without. Hi, my name is Joyce Bayou, and I'm the adjutant for the American Legion post here in Freeport, and I wanted to let our town councilors know about a program that we've been asked to do this May by one of our councilors, it's called the Get Out to Vote program. We've all known that the June election, which is when we have the school referendum, and sometimes some town referendums, has lower participation than the normal November election timeframe. So, we've decided to put a mailer out to sixty-five and older, because those seem to be the ones that don't know that there's an election going on, or what the election is for. So, that's approximately two thousand three hundred and six voters. Just approximately, it's nineteen, nineteen hundred and eighty-six households.
Approximately.
And stamps, give or take one or two. So, we're going to be telling them about the date, the location. We're going to be telling them that they need to check the signs to know which door to go in, because we had people last time that left because they couldn't figure out which door to go in, even though there were signs. We're also going to be telling them how to access the absentee voting system. And we are taking all of this through the town clerk's office to make sure that our verbiage is correct according to the state statute. So, we were also hoping to show people what was going to be on the ballot, the actual questions themselves, perhaps, but we've run into a bit of a snafu doing that. So, election day is the fourteenth of June, and absentee voting, according to the state statute, starts thirty days prior, so in this case, because of the weekends, it will be starting on the sixteenth of May. The RSU vote for their budget referendum is the twenty-fourth of May. So, if everything goes well, our town, yeah, okay, Jake, do with the map. So, if everything goes well, the clerk will hopefully have the ballots ready to go out ten to eleven days after voting starts. So, I find this little problem to be, it, it's pissed me off. I think that the town elections are the first step in our democratic process. And as the town elected body, you oversee this statute and make sure that it happens at a local level. So, I would hope that the council will take this issue up with the state attorney general's office and our representatives to get the law changed, get it amended, to ensure that this overlap doesn't happen again. There's nothing that can be done for this year. I'm sure that the town clerk has got some plan in effect, but we need to make sure this doesn't happen again. Whoever made up the RSU five laws versus the election timeframe didn't talk, they need to talk, and they need to figure something out so that the RSU five referendum is done at least thirty-two days prior to the election, so they have time to get the ballots actually made, printed, and out in a timely fashion. But I wanted to let you know about the mailing that we're doing, because as councilors, you often get the phone calls, and what is this thing that the Legion is sending us? It's just an information to try to get more participation in our June election. That's all, any questions for me?
Joyce, if we were successful as the town municipal government to convince the RSU to move its budget validation vote, their, their, their challenge is, huge constituency that votes in that is the school families, who are counting the minutes down to summer vacation towards the end of June. At least, this is some conversation that I'd heard previously in years past about why they may or may not want to move it. And if we have our, so which, which date would be better or easier to move? The, the school budget validation, or our, like, in other words, could we pull them earlier?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out which is the best way to.
Obviously, not for this time.
No, not for this time.
But I would think that for next year, if I was the schoolperson, I would want to get it done two weeks earlier. get it done two weeks earlier so that I had everything done that much before I broke for summer vacation. If you move the other election, then if you have a primary, you're cutting time off of the person who wins the primary and their time to campaign as the person. So.
Yeah.
You know, so personally, I think moving the school back.
So, the, yeah, the, the budget validation vote process, at least from what I've witnessed over years, is, is the culmination of all of their.
Recording and progress.
Budget committee, their board meetings.
Board meetings.
And then it has to go to the town, which is the, the June, whatever date that is, June 14th date. So, I don't know what to do with the schedule that, in other words, we'd have to stretch the time in between those two things in order to not have them overlap.
Yeah, about two weeks. I think that the town clerk has probably got some suggestions for you, so I'm going to let her have the mic.
I, I don't have suggestions, I just have some clarification. So, the problem is that RSU, the school law is run under Title 20A, whole set of rules set up that don't coincide with how we have to do our absentee voting, which is under 21A. 21A says we do absentee voting for 30 days prior to election. The problem is that the RSUs are tied in their schedule setting in that they have to hold the RSU budget meeting, not election, the budget meeting, within 30 days of the election. So, the law instantly becomes a conflict right there. The closer that, the further out they can hold it, the better it is for us for conducting absentee voting. So, what we do in absentee voting, when they haven't held the budget meeting yet, is we can give people the ballot, we tell them that they cannot return it until after the close of that budget meeting so they know the number they're voting on. If I give them a blank ballot, it doesn't have any numbers on it. Those numbers are set then, and so they can't legally return an absentee ballot until they know what they're voting. There is a conflict in the law, it's, it's more than what the town council can do to move it.
Sure.
It's, it's a bigger issue that, you know, our representatives need to address.
But in a best-case scenario, Chris, there are still a few days off even if they hold it 30 days out.
Yep.
To getting the information to you to have a ballot that's ready to go out.
So, I attend that budget meeting, I have the numbers that night, and we can start officially allowing absentee ballots to be returned the next morning.
So, you could do it within a day, but you're still 29 days, not 30?
It's still more convenient if the RSU holds their budget meeting earlier in the process, is what, you know. Joyce, Joyce has a valid point.
Right. Okay.
But they can't hold it further out than 30, correct?
Correct.
It has to be 30 or less and we have to start, we have to have the absentee ballots ready 30 or more.
That is absolutely correct, Darrell.
Council Fornier?
You know, this is my pet peeve. And what's, it's frustrating in the, probably the solution, it cannot be done at the local level, it had to be done at the state level, that we hold the RSU vote in November. Couple of reasons. When we look at the people who participate in the vote in November, our numbers are significantly higher.
Yeah.
Number one. Number two, are the people that I've talked to in the community, a lot of people are confused on the date, are, don't know when it's happening, at the best of our ability to educate them. So, I would highly encourage that if we could start the ball rolling, realizing it has to be a change at the state level, but maybe we could start that so the future votes on the RSU budget would be better representative and our voters of, of the town, I think, would have a better chance to go out and participate in the process. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I've, I've heard that same point brought up, Council Fornier, and I don't know how much water it holds, but the, the position coming back from the school districts are usually that in November, they don't have enough firm data on their head counts to be able to project what their budget's going to be, you know, almost 12 months in advance about how to, about how to, I mean, that's, you know, I'm not trying to defend one way or the other, but that's been the argument that's come back in, in the past is that's too far in advance on the start of the school year to have, to have the discussion. I don't know, Council Pillsbury might have an opinion on that, but I don't want to put you on the spot.
Stay out of the RSU business.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that would be a great intermediary.
Right. All right, any other members of the public wish to address the council on public participation, non-agenda items? Welcome to step forward. All right, we'll close that item and move on to our next item, which is the consent Consent agendas take action on the following items of business as read by the council acting chair. We have one, two, three, four, five, five items on the consent agenda. Consider action relative to adopting the April 19th, 2022 consent agenda, be it ordered that the April 19th, 2022 consent agenda be adopted. Second. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Any reason to take any items off of that consent agenda and have them for general discussion on the council? All right, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent. That we're going to set for May 3rd. So, the next four items on our agenda, while we can have a little bit of context sharing here, we're not actually discussing these items, we're just setting a public hearing for the discussion as it's listed. Counselor Pillsbury, could you please read item number 76-22?
Yes. Item 76-22, to consider action relative to setting a public hearing for May 3rd, 2022, at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in the town council chambers at 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss proposed amendments to the official zoning map for the town of Freeport pertaining to shoreline zoning. Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for May 3rd, 2022, at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in the town council chambers at 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss proposed amendments to the official zoning map for the town of Freeport pertaining to shoreline zoning. Be it further ordered, the copies be distributed equally between the town clerk's office, the town manager's office and the Freeport Community Library for inspection by citizens during normal business hours, and the notice be placed on Freeport's local cable channel three and the town's website.
Second. All right, so we have a healthy chunk of paper in our packets or electrons, if you're reading online, for the replacement language that we're proposing in the amendments. Any questions about setting the public hearing? Peter, anything extraordinary about setting the public hearing?
So, you're on 7622, right, the map?
That's correct.
So, the most substantive change here is that several things have been removed from the map and attached as amend, addendums to the map so they can be changed without you having to re-adopt the map. I think that's something significant to consider, so coastal bluffs, flood zones and possibly resource protection. Nope, RP stays on here. But those two things now are addendums that can be changed by the respective authorities. So, if Maine Geological Survey, MGS, adopts different coastal bluff maps, currently you would have to amend the zoning map, so if they make a change the day after you amend the new zoning map and you don't change the zoning map for five years, we have an inaccurate zoning map for five years.
Yeah.
This will just incorporate those documents, the most recent version by order.
Right.
So, and the flood maps are going to be changing in the next year to two, so those, the new version when they're adopted will just get slapped right on the back and these old ones from the 70s will go away. So, the council doesn't have to take any action to stay up to date because those have been, caused some problems where the bluffs weren't accurate and people came in and couldn't build because the bluffs weren't accurate in the model. Doesn't change what we're supposed to do, where, depending on where the bluffs are, but the process of amending the map gets automatic as opposed to you having to take a step.
Right. Okay. Any other questions about setting the public hearing? All right, motions on the floor, been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing number one, set for May 3rd.
Can we do the next three as a block? Or do we have to read the be it ordered?
I think we have to read the be it ordered, sorry. I'd love that efficiency, but I've been advised in the past that action items require individual action for votes. Counselor Daniele, would you like to read 77-22?
I'd be happy to. To consider action relative to setting a public hearing for May 3rd, 2022, at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in the town council chambers at 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss the creation of a new proposed shoreline zoning ordinance for the town of Freeport. Be it ordered that the public hearing be set for May 3rd at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in the town council chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss the creation of a new proposed shoreline zoning ordinance for the town of Freeport. Be it further ordered that the copies be distributed equally between the town's clerk's office, the town manager's office and the Freeport Community Library for inspection by citizens during normal business hours, and the notice be placed on Freeport's local channel, cable, channel three and the town's website.
Second. All right, been moved and seconded. Again, we're just setting a public hearing. This is the language that will be amended in the actual zoning ordinance. And the language is going to be updated to comply with the minimum requirements of the Shoreland Zone Act. We technically have a zoning ordinance that's in conflict with the shoreline zone from the state, so that's part of the update, most of the update, not all of it. Any other questions about setting this public hearing? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, two down, two to go. Counsel Lawrence, could you please read 7822, and you can read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that public hearing be set for May 3rd, 2022. I'm going to slow it down a little bit. At the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in the town council chambers at 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss amendments to Chapter 31- Coastal Waters Ordinance. Be it further ordered that copies be distributed equally between the town clerk's office, the town manager's office and the Freeport Community Library for inspection by citizens during normal business hours, and the notice be placed on Freeport's local channel, cable, channel three and the town website.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. This is the final arrival of the language that we've been talking with Coastal Waters Commission about warfs and, and weirs into various segments of our shoreland to get compliance and again, consistency with balancing all of the uses in those areas. So, this is again, setting the public hearing, we're not discussing the matter tonight. There'll be plenty of lively conversation, I'm sure, on May 3rd. Any questions to the manager before we vote on this for setting the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Counsel Fornier, could you please read 7922?
Certainly. Be it ordered that a public hearing for May 3rd, 2022, at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss amendments to Chapter 21, Freeport Zoning Ordinance. Be it further ordered that copies be distributed equally between the town clerk's office, the town manager's office and the Freeport Community Library for inspection by citizens during normal business hours, and that the notices be placed in Freeport's local channel three and on the town's website.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. There's a whole long list of sections in the proposed zoning language that will be amended. No need to be reading those all out loud, but there's a long list listed on the agenda. Any other questions for the manager before we adopt this public hearing to set it? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anonymous. All right, so we have four public hearings set for May 3rd. Anyone want to bring some extra snacks for that meeting? Our next item is item number 80-22 relating to our capital budget, and this is the final discussion and hopefully adoption of our capital program for FY '23. There are a number of attachments that came with our agenda in our package, and this is at least the third time that we've gone through this, but it's a chance for us to ask any final questions, get clarifications, and we have our finance director, Jessica Malloy, with us to walk us through the, the program and what we're going to vote on. Thank you, Jessica, welcome.
Absolutely. The only difference I have in the packet that I left at the table for you is we had a, a late request for funding to replace the fencing at the library.
I was just going to say I was the late requested myself in the council chair, so.
I wasn't.
I was taking responsibility more than anything else, so carry on, sorry to interrupt.
No, sorry, I, I was just was going to leave it at that. So, there's a $20,000 increase to the municipal facility article, bringing that total to $460,000 versus the $440,000. So, before you today is the total appropriation of $1,610,000. And just to note, this does not include any impact for the ACAF request of $25,000.
And that would be under the TIF, Destination TIFs section when we get to that?
Yes, if you choose to add it in, yep. The, I believe last time the request was for further information and I, I don't have any inform, I, I did not receive any information.
I, I got that yesterday.
Oh, perfect.
So, I can, I can share that when we get to that point.
Okay, perfect.
Counsel Bradley?
Question, yes. You indicated that it doesn't include the ACAF request, does it, does it include the FEDC or the library request?
Yes.
Well, it doesn't include the library request because they haven't voted to amend it, right?
I reflected the change in here to have it ready for them, but I have, you're right, it can easily be removed.
Just.
But the, the total does include it in here.
Okay, got it.
And the reason that ACAF is being singled out is being not included?
Because I had specific directions from last time to wait for information and I didn't have any information to bring, so I didn't dare add it in where I hadn't received any information. But it sounds like council received it directly, so at this point, had I received it, I probably would have put it in in anticipation, but I didn't have the information that was requested, so I didn't dare put it in.
Thank you.
Counsel Fornier?
I had a discussion, I missed last meeting, on the possibility just buying a chassis, not the plow and using the body. That has not been adjusted, is that going to be adjusted so we do that and save some money here?
Yeah, we had that discussion at the last meeting, in this, with this unit, that is not recommended. The, the beds that we have recently purchased are in anticipation of being able to do that, but this particular vehicle has an older bed and, and it, it, you would not get the life out of it to sustain, you know, the change in the chassis at this point. But we are designing that for future, for the, and we have been using that for the future purchases based on the most recent purchases, but because this is an older vehicle, it's not cost-effective to do that process on this one.
I can elaborate for Darrell. The first, this is the first stainless body they purchased and it was a different grade of steel and all of the successive ones, the five or six that have come, four or five that have come afterwards, have been a different grade of steel. This one has issues with it, that they don't recommend putting it on. They recommend the four or five, whatever that number is, that have been bought with a higher level of steel, that those will be reused for two eight-year to 12-year cycles. This one, no.
Okay, I, yeah, that's not the information conveyed to me, so I guess I have a question, you know.
That's.
But that, that's fine.
Well, let's, let's, we'll connect with Earl, you and I can both talk with him because, yeah.
How much money are we talking about here? If we were to do what Darrell was suggesting as opposed to what the recommendation is because of the different steel, how much would we save if we actually took the risk?
I.
I mean, out of a $200,000 purchase, 50 to 70, I'm just guessing here.
Yeah, I would say that was going to be.
In the mid-tens, not 100,000. I'd say in the mid-tens.
Is it that the steel, I, I have no idea what I'm asking even, so please, if it sounds stupid, it is.
You're fine.
But if, is it that the steel is of such a lower grade than what we're buying now that we don't get any benefit out of doing what Darrell's asking about?
We would have, my understanding is we would have to replace this before the chassis would then need to be rep- would then need to be replaced. So you wouldn't get the full life cycle of like a two-cycle expansion, right? No, that's okay, go ahead.
But you would get some benefit.
Yeah, but you're paying to mount and unmount and taking the truck out of service and sending it away for two months or three months to get it swapped over, which is an additional cost that you wouldn't have if you just did it right the first time.
So some savings doesn't cover...
We'd be on half-cycles. If this makes it two years it needs to be replaced.
As opposed to four.
Right.
Ah, 12. So these last...so the trucks are lasting 10 or 12 years?
I believe there should be 12, yeah.
They're substantial life on them. The reason we went from carbon steel to stainless, the first one that they bought is the one we're replacing now, which was a different grade of stainless. I don't...I mean, it's got to have less chromium in it or something like that, and it is not as rust resistant and corrosion resistant as the ones that they bought, you know, seven years ago, six years ago, five years ago, on the eight to 10 years ago that this one was bought.
Right.
Was a different grade, and they're not recommending it get transferred over. That's...
That's my understanding.
I don't have the exact chemical composition of the steel, but my understanding is there was a difference in the grade of the beds that they started buying.
Well, I spent, as you know, an hour down there crawling underneath the trucks and going over the trucks, so I can maybe buy that a little bit. Then I guess the next question I have is on the plow and the wing, and looking at and asking the mechanic what the life expectancy of that. He thought that that was also could be repurposed and used on a new truck. So I'm willing this year to maybe bite the bullet, and what I'm understanding is your argument is that we have the same body styles and the same amount of steel in each body now moving forward, and that those will be repurposed down the road. So hopefully, all we have to do is buy a chassis as opposed to buying a dump body and buying plow gear and headgear, which I think is wise, and I think it's money well spent. So I guess I'd be willing this year to approve this one, but, you know, I really don't want to see another request come forward so that we're on, you know, we're on the same playing field and giving a best bang for a buck, which I think buying stainless is the way to go, and I commend the town for doing that.
We can appropriate the money and then still have this conversation, couldn't we? Just because we're saying we could do it, we could still ask them to look into it and continue to go on, would be my...
Of course.
Right, that's what I was going to point out. We're not making the purchase decision tonight, we're just making the allocation of funds available tonight.
Correct.
And to answer, but to answer the question, yes, I have been told that the next three or four in a line, if everything holds true to what they're seeing for performance, they would recommend not to buy additional body with it, that we would swap it over. Because I think the question is, would it go two years, would it go four years, or would it go 10 to 12 years? There's life left in it, but they're not convinced it's a full cycle, and they really want to get two out of it. So if the trucks, if we keep the trucks for 10 years, say, are they going to get 20 years out of the body, or are they going to get 13?
And that's a legitimate question that I understand. I guess, you know, we can talk offline and think of that. Thank you.
Council Danielle?
At one point, we were going to redo the grounds out front. Is that in here?
It's actually funded last year.
Okay, so that money is still available, so we don't need to see it here.
Correct.
And I've got...yeah, we...and Adam and I talked about that, and that's on his, I believe it's on his summer to fall get it moving list for this year, so.
Well, we have input into that? Because I know, like, you showed us the initial design, but then we wanted to wait, so are we going to have a...
I'd love to have input. I'd love you guys to have input if you want, yeah.
My understanding is the reason we waited was to see what would come out of the downtown revisioning process and how it prioritized these kinds of improvements for this property.
Correct. And I think they actually showed the original, one of the drafts of the original design on the plan, like, that's great, do it, is what they said, so.
Who said that?
Principal group, yeah.
All right, so the current amendments to the capital program for FY '23 are 1.610, which is on page two. And then there, on the very back, the last page of the information packet is a list of the amendments from what we started with to where we are today, with the exception of the $25,000 ACAF request. The information that I received from the director and the board chair at ACAF was for the $25,000 to cover expenses for additional infrastructure and projection sound equipment that they're building into the facility to allow them to do things like what we had here two weeks ago, which was the Bates College Film Festival, which was a really interesting new thing that has never been in Freeport before. And we were able to work out an arrangement, they were able to work out an arrangement with the Nordica Theater for showings in the theater with live discussions from the film artists at Meeting House Arts. So that is something that I think we're going to see more of. The feedback that I heard was that everybody that went, including the arrangers and organizers, loved the idea. So the request from ACAF is for $25,000 to finish up their capital improvements on Meeting House Arts to really add flexibility and versatility to their ability to host and produce performing arts and visual arts program right there on Main Street. And I strongly recommend that we include that. It is identified as a part of the capital budget, and in the conversations that I had with the board chair and the director, that inclusion here is not the place to talk about ongoing operating support, and I know that's been a conversation up here, that we're trying to invest in the physical plant facility with this allocation of funding, which is why I support it. And I think we can have lots of other conversations about activities and functions that the town will do throughout the year where we can partner with ACAF and Meeting House Arts for various functions and rent the space, coordinate with producing programs, bring in speakers, et cetera, which would be able to amplify their ability to host events. So I'd like to make a request to add $25,000 to the overall FY '23 capital budget to include this request from ACAF.
Do you need a second?
I need a second.
I'd like to second. And appreciate your work.
Any conversation about that? Council Fornier?
One question, I think that would probably be a good investment. So the only question I had, you brought up, if we wanted to use the facility for a town event or whatever, we would have to rent that, or is that something that we could probably use in kind?
I think it depends on their schedule and the event and how much time we need, et cetera. So it's a performer...it's a meeting space that, you know, is a decent size. It's not the state theater, obviously, but obviously, you know, we're a smaller town. So I think we have a lot of options to do, to do things there. And now with projection and audio, there can be all kinds of different events there. So there is a seconded motion to add $25,000 to the FY '23 capital budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, six to zero.
I will bring your total capital program to $1,635,000, and the funding source from TIF to $210,000, just so for your...
Out of that particular item.
For your voting.
Right, because that, yeah, I forgot to mention that, that the Destination TIF is the source of that additional increment for Meeting House Arts. And so you can see the available balances and what the total amount is. So that'll be 287, is that what you said? Jessica?
The funding from TIF will be 210,000.
210.
Yep.
All right, I'm reading the wrong number.
And the total capital plan will be $1,635,000.
Great. Any other comments, questions, adjustments? Again, we're allocating the funding here, we're not making purchase decisions. Generally, those are developed by the staff and handled through the manager so that we're not having to understand specs on police cruisers and the technology that has to go into those to make those useful, as an example. Any other questions on the capital program? All right, and I believe we have not, we have not read the "be it ordered." So Council Bradley, could you please read the "be it ordered" for...
Thank you, Chip.
Item number...
822.
8022.
Be it ordered that the proposed capital program for fiscal year 2023 be approved.
Okay. Last chance, any hands?
Does it have to show the amendment to the library?
Do we amend your motion to say "as amended"?
Sure, as amended. I'm moved to amend my order to include the amendments.
I'll second the correction.
Hold on that.
All right, so we have to vote to change, to amend the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. So the capital budget, as amended, and one more time, the dollar amount will be $1,635,000.
Zero, zero, zero.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
carries, six to zero. You got that vote, Chris?
Got it.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number 81-22 relating to short-term rental registration renewals. And I believe we're back down on the other end. Councilor Pillsbury, could you please read the "be it ordered"?
Yes. Be it ordered that the 2022 short-term rental registration renewals be approved.
Second.
This is, was called out when we passed the ordinance last year that we would have an annual review of complaints at the council. And it's that time, since it's a little over a year since we passed the ordinance for registering short-term rentals. Chris, do you have anything to present, or is the material that was in the agenda part of all that we need to know?
I felt like since we're going to do a review of the ordinance anyways, this was more just meeting the ordinance requirement for the town council to approve the renewals.
Great.
So no additional.
Okay, so the memo includes some statistics as well as an important note that there have been zero filed complaints.
I want to clarify, there have been zero filed complaints about any of the renewals. So the ordinance requires us to...
Yeah, okay.
There have been inquiries about maybe places operating without short-term rentals that we would contact and say, hey, there's a short-term rental ordinance, and most people would follow, everyone would follow through with that once they were made aware of it. There were complaints about some units that couldn't be approved, and there's a few that we're still working on because they didn't meet standards in the zone. We talked with one of the property owners at the last council meeting, who was kind of out in the cold, Mr. and Mrs. Link from South Freeport, because they couldn't meet the standard because they had some issues, but we're working on that with them. There's a few other situations like that. I know this isn't intended to be a review of the whole comprehensive ordinance, because I think a lot of people have some things to say about that. But in terms of the violations, none of the people on this, I think that's what the ordinance requires us to say, Nick and I, to communicate to you, how many of these in here had complaints last year, so you're not approving something that's a violation.
That's right.
So none of the 60, 53 renewals and new ones that are on the list have complaints associated with them. I think that's the best way to describe it.
Council Bradley?
Yeah, so, you know, we went through this in great detail about this time last year. As one person who got involved, my position was that we sort of bailed out, you know, we didn't put teeth into this. We did what, at the recommendation of other councils, was basically, you know, notification and reporting ordinance. And I just want to say, good for you guys, you know? I mean, here we did something that works, that doesn't have, isn't onerous, isn't beating people up about the head, and it's working out. If I'm right about that, then I think that's a huge success.
Council Lawrence?
Well, I thought we were doing this, that we had up to 300 in the town at one point, and then it was 153 last year, or one, somewhere around 150. And I'm seeing it's 53 or 61 out of all this, so I don't see the whole, the whole point because it's only 53. And of those 53, we had, what, two bad actors? And we put this into place, and there's mostly, most of it is already ordinance, we have in place that would be enforced. That's all I've got to say about this right now. It's kind of like the Victualist License, I think.
Yep.
Which we just voted out.
Individually, Chip, I don't disagree with you. I would like to see a couple of years of data before we conclude we really have something that's totally unnecessary. The tangible issues that prompted this in the first place were real and came from some very specific incidents going on in neighborhoods. So I think there's potential for something to be there, and what we're doing tonight is to just look at complaints, and we haven't seen any, so let's hope that continues. But I don't disagree with your, with your logic on taking a look at that. Other comments, questions? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2022 short-term rental registration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six to zero, Chris. All right, our next item, related to our dilemma outlined and highlighted in our public comment period, item number 82-22 relating to signing the RSU 5 Budget Validation Election Warrant, which is their official document. After we take action on this item, I'm going to pass this down, and we're all going to sign it. That's a requirement of the connection between the RSU and the town, is that we endorse their budget warrant, which goes to voters on May, what was that date, Chris? May 20-something?
24th.
May 24th, and then, and then all towns vote on it on June 14th. So Councilor Fornier, would you please read the item, "be it ordered"?
Certainly. Be it ordered that the RSU Budget Validation Election Warrant for June 14, 2022 be signed.
Second.
And I'm not going to read it out loud, but it's a pretty simple, you know, we've seen it before plenty of times, and it's, the signature page is the execution of their ability to then go put a budget in front of the voters. So that's what we're actually taking action on tonight, is to endorse that effort. Council Bradley?
If we did do this and use this as an opportunity to make the point that Joyce and everyone else made earlier, in other words, to say, we really think this needs to be adjusted at the state level before you're going to get our buy-in to this, is that destructive?
Well, it would be, it would, it would stop the wheels turning for this year, for sure.
If even one of us didn't vote for this?
One meaning a town, or one meaning a council? Oh, no, it just has to carry, it does not need to have everybody sign.
We can sign and name it.
But if we all did that, it would be a problem.
Deciding to be confrontational, yeah. I don't actually know what the ramification is if we were...
So you need a majority with, you need a majority with six, so that's still four, so there's room for two people to write protest in their name signature.
Chris, can I ask what happens if we don't sign the warrant?
I would love to be able to tell you the legal ramification. We've had other councils challenge it before, and basically you can't. And the school holds the election, there's the warrant, and I can get better answer than that. What, Peter?
I ran this to the attorney, I want to say, five years ago.
It was, and you really...
A separate council had asked the question. It, the statute says that the town, no election shall happen, that the town council hasn't, the officers, municipal officers have to call the election. So they can't hold... So they can't hold an election without you doing it. It also says upon, you know, the laws are structured, upon getting the notice from the school that this is the election that's needed, you guys are, shall.
Shall.
Call the election. So it would definitely stop the election from happening until multiple attorneys got involved in front of a court and said, hey, Freeport's not doing, and a judge would have to decide whether you guys had the legal basis to not sign it or not, and a judge might have to order it. And I'm assuming if you, if we told the school we weren't calling their election, that there'd be an emergency motion in front of a court like tomorrow or two days from now.
Sounds like it costs a lot of money.
It's going to cost us both a lot of money, because we both use the same law firm, so we'd have to get conflict counsel on top of that.
It should make it cheaper. A bulk discount, is that?
Yeah. We could consent to them representing us against each, each other if we want, that's true. I don't think they would take that case, so, yeah.
Counsel Fournier?
I think we do have to approve it, but here we go kicking the can down the road again, and not addressing an issue that we know had been around for, for a number of years.
Fifteen years.
Exactly. So I'm hoping, you know, I will vote in favor to allow this to go to vote, but I hope we have the courage to come up and, and look at fixing the problem down the road.
We have a tool now where we come up with things that we know we want to take up again, that if, like, we don't want to keep stepping in it or kicking the can. We put things on a table list and, and action. So I recommend that we put this on a December agenda item, so that we can then go to the very first RSU budget meeting in January, when the super is just eliciting budget proposals from the administrators, as, you know, well, maybe we should even go sooner than that. I don't know, I don't even know if that's early enough in the process, probably, probably not.
Right after the vote might be.
Yeah, right after the vote might even be a better idea. Counselor Pillsbury?
Can we just send a letter to the RSU, the new superintendent, and just say, can you take a look at this? This is causing a problem with us setting an election and allowing for absentee ballots to go out. And is there a way for you to, you know, work with us on this?
But it's a state law.
It's a state law.
You need both. You need the state law to be amended so that there's not an overlap period, and you also need the school, because there'll still be some wiggle room on either side unless you make it like sixty and thirty, you're still going to need the school to play along and pick a date in the middle of that. So it'll, it'll really need both, I think. I guess it could theoretically happen if they have the budget meeting on day thirty.
Yeah.
Chris could legally leave the budget meeting, it's at eight PM and write up a warrant at eight oh five PM.
We don't want to set that.
You know.
Right, you don't want to do that.
I mean, in practicality of having the actual meetings, having you guys sign things, you really need like a week or five days in between. Their Wednesday meeting, or Tuesday meeting, or Friday meeting, whenever it is, to your next Tuesday meeting would be the right timeframe. So instead of thirty and thirty, it really needs to be, shall be no earlier than thirty-five and no later than twenty-five, or maybe I've got those backwards. But there needs to be whatever we want for clearance period in the middle, the law, one law should read before that, and the other law should read after that period, so.
Two state statutes which are in conflict, which we can't affect, so we need, and my question is, are we the only, we can't be the only?
Every single.
Town.
School. Every single RSU that's operating under the timeline under twenty-eight, not everybody has an RSU.
Why don't we just, why don't we just coordinate? You know, start now with a coordination process between RSUs and schools. Ask our RSU to take a lead with us in solving this through a legislative fix in Augusta. Get Melanie and other people who are sympathetic to this to work on it.
Sure.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on. Do, are we sure that this is in their interest? Because they may not, they may want to change the other part of it, the, they may not want to change, I don't know, I've never discussed this with anybody of significance at the RSU. Is there a reason why that thirty-day period is significant, and they want to go as close as possible to the other end of it?
I'm, I'm more than willing to take any volunteer counselor with me to go meet with the new superintendent, twenty minutes, thirty minutes max, and say, this is an issue we've been addressing, or ignoring to address it for many years, and we got to fix it so that we can have adequate representation from absentee voting. I mean, if, nothing else, the last two years shows us how important an absentee voting is.
Without the state law change, we can get pretty close, but there's still that crunch where we're breaking the law both ways.
We don't want to snake through this on.
Chris, what is it this year? Did you say sixteen days? Fourteen days?
I said that, but it's pretty close.
It's, it's close, it's, it's around fifteen days, somewhere in there that, of the absentee voting period, where the school budget can't be sent out because it hasn't been approved by the district vote. So that's, you know, that's only getting fifty percent of what the law is trying to attain by having absentee voting.
Peter, could I ask you, or delegate somebody to set that up with the new superintendent, and then invite myself and anybody else that'd like to come?
Say the single hottest issue in Freeport right now is the timing of the elections and the budget meeting. Maybe not that, that might be a little bit of exaggeration.
Not far from the top.
Haven't you heard about the island rule?
I believe you mean agenda item number other business two, yes. Heard about it, something.
Thanks for your energy on this, Counsel Fournier. I agree, we need to get it changed. We can't keep short shrifting our election process. Thanks to Joyce for pointing it out. All right, so we have not yet voted on the election warrant, so we have a motion that's been seconded. I'm going to pass this down after we take the vote. Any last questions before we vote? All those in favor of the budget validation election warrant for June fourteen, 2022 be signed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero, Chris. So the, the top sheet for signature is the school warrant, and actually underneath here is something that was on the consent agenda, which is the liquor license on town-owned land, which we voted on under the consent agenda, so just a couple of you need to sign that. There's only six of us, and there's six lines, so we'll pass that down. Okay, so here's a process question slash comment. The next two items, item number one-nine-four dash two-one and one-nine-five dash two-one, you might deduce from their enumeration that they are tabled from last year, 2021.
It was the fall.
Both of these items are now more properly addressed and, and will be taken care of, one way or the other, at the public hearings that we set for May third. So because I didn't go to law school, this is not a legal summary, but they are effectively moot. And so the two items that have been tabled are really no longer necessary. We had a brief discussion before the meeting, because tabling the discussion is now, we've accomplished what we wanted to do, which was to incorporate the changes that we kept tabling this to include, are now included in the document that we're going to vote on, on May third. Counsel Bradley, you look confused.
Well, I'm just concerned that there's a, isn't there a possibility that after the public hearing, we would decide not to adopt what's in the public hearing, and we would be left with this? If that's true, then I think we should table it one more time, until we know what we were actually doing on the, after the hearings. Because somebody could come in with something we hadn't thought about, and I know we're all sort of hoping we get rid of this, handle this at the next vote, but it is possible that we, we would decide not to adopt those amendments, and then what we, if we had gotten rid of this, which is why we keep tabling it, we would have nothing for shoreline zoning.
Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the amendments that are considered in one-nine-four and one-nine-five are inclusive plus additional in what we're going to be taking comment on at the public hearing? So I think we've superseded these with the action that we've now got for proper language coming on May third.
John, can I, I think I can summarize it. This is all of the proposed changes to shoreland, required changes to shoreland within the zoning ordinance, keeping them all internal. The proposal that you voted on earlier to set for public hearing from the planning board pulls all the shoreline changes out of zoning.
Right.
So it's the required changes, as well as the removal of them from zoning. So one of those items was amendments to the zoning ordinance, which strikes, you had like thirty-seven sections, I'm exaggerating, but all of those sections were striking all of the shoreline references within the zoning ordinance. So these, and then you're right, though, that there are additional changes, coastal waters is not contained in this, some of those changes that, that have been incorporated into your earlier vote to have the public hearing on, that have come up since this got changed. So they are dueling proposals in one sense, that you could adopt either one to get the minimum.
Okay, I understood from Caroline that what was in this that we had tabled.
They are, they're all.
Was included here, but is in the separate ordinance language.
Yes, right, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So these go to the zoning code, and that goes to the ord, the shoreline zone.
The tabled item would make all of the changes, the mandated state minimum changes, within the zoning ordinance, not making it a separate document.
Right.
And I know part of the reluctance, rightfully so, was to make sure that it got through the process. It, it's not there yet, it's not wrong, it's, you haven't approved it yet, but it did make it through the planning board with full recommendation. There were a few comments from the public, constructive, you may get some comments, similar comments, at the public hearing, or others that I haven't dreamed of yet. Somebody could bring up a problem or an issue, but.
Okay, well.
There, you really can, if you're confident that separating them out is the way you want to address it, then you can kill this one. If you want this as backup, it can stay there.
I'm trying to just find some efficiency, but I see the point, that if, for whatever reason, everything blows up on May third, and we choose not to adopt that, after the process it's been through, then we could pick this up and adopt just the minimums to meet the state compliance. So other than the ink on the paper, it's not, not any additional burden to table it one more time.
Should I, do we table it now, or, I mean, do we just continue and make a motion to continue the table amendments till after the next meeting?
I would make it to the date, what was, May fifth or?
May third.
May third.
Sounds like that's a motion in, in progress.
It's a motion, I am, I'm making a motion to table the last two parts till May, after the zoning and shoreline zoning discussion on May third, if it's necessary.
We need a second?
Second.
Second, okay. So we're going to continue the tabling until May third? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, six to zero. All right.
Can we agree not to have that information in our packet, though, so we don't have to print it out again?
Trying to do a little house cleaning.
If, I would say if anybody wants to request the zoning, any of the stuff from earlier, make that request explicitly to Chris. Otherwise, Chris, I wouldn't duplicate any of this seventy pages, eighty, or two-hundred and seventy pages, say, with the zoning ordinance, unless somebody asks for it.
All right, so that concludes our action items on the agenda, seven-twenty-three. We have two items in other business. The first one can be a conversation, discussion, which is the discernment of how to allocate spending for the ARPA or ARPA funds, as been, as has been indicated for receipt to the town. We don't actually have them yet. We had some early discussion several months ago about one particular allocation, which was to provide essentially hazard pay for EMS, fire, and PD staff that were right on the front lines during the first two years of the pandemic, for some, for some back pay to, to recognize that. And then we have roughly $743,000 that has not yet been allocated. I just want to set a couple of things before the conversation tonight. First is that we, we had brought up this topic several meetings ago. It was agreed that Counselor Pillsbury, Counsel Bradley, and I would have some conversations outside of council meetings to come up with some recommendations. Part of what you see here is evidence of, of those recommendations for suggested discussion. This is not the plan, this is just a conversation. And I'm sorry, I didn't came to you on email, but if your computer blew up, you didn't see it. So this is it right here. And so this is just to start the conversation, but the, the context that we're going to talk about is, is, is within some parameters of what we have actually as an allowable use, so to speak, in allocating ARPA funds. The first one is that to facilitate taking some action on how to do this, we actually have a ticking clock here to take action this evening, to direct the finance director and the manager to make a special designation on how we are going to receive the funds. And the language that we have for that is to, to receive and, and use the standard allowance not to exceed our total award allocation for identifying revenue loss. And if we end up making official actions to vote allocations of ARPA funds for specific projects, then those project recipients become sub-receipients and subject to all of the federal funds reporting, which I think we want to avoid. And so the first action is for us to consider taking the funds under that category, which is general revenue loss, which frees us from having that obligation of a sub-recipient having to do reporting. We can still make allocations based on how we see fit, but that's, we have to make that designation in the month of April, I'm told, so this would be the time to do it, to direct staff to make that with the Fed, so that we can make that election. The second thing is, is related to that, which is if we pass funds over to another municipal entity, such as one of the utilities, then they are very likely, Jessica's going to be finding out about it, but the very, very.
I did.
You did? Then they are.
Yeah.
So the utility, or any other sub-recipient, would become responsible for the reporting of, of receiving federal funds. And that is not an insubstantial task, where you have wage rate compliance and procurement standards that are required. If anybody has ever worked with federal funds, it's not insubstantial. So if we were to consider an allocation, even, even after we make the election, of COVID revenue loss, and make it to another municipal entity, they would be responsible as a sub-recipient for, for that reporting. So just to keep that in mind, if we're talking about what to do with, with the funds. In conversations, the, roughly the breakout that you see on the email is a synthesis of the conversations between Counselor Pillsbury, Bradley, and myself for roughly a thirty, forty, thirty split. Again, this is just to get the conversation going with an allocation to FCS, to work directly with people, individuals that were impacted negatively from COVID. We already have an allocation channel in our capital budget for FCS, so it makes it very easy for us to direct funds through that. The second one is to, as indicated, we're getting ready to adopt a plan for major downtown improvements. There are going to be a number of things on there that the town might want to participate in, and so the suggestion is to have an allocation of funds available to help cost-share some of those improvements. And then the last one would be an infrastructure project, which, which is very likely to be subjected to the, the reporting requirements of, of federal funds receipt, which is procurement and wage rate compliance, Davis Bacon, if anybody's ever come across that. Again, so just for consideration, and I apologize that this was not in the packet, because I couldn't get it to Chris by Wednesday of last week, so it was sent out to you all on email yesterday.
John, is that, is that what, is that the same document you're reading off of that I was copied on?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
I still can't print it from here, but. Yes, okay.
So the suggestion to start tonight's conversation is to, is to have thirty percent of, of what's available go to FCS, that would be two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, with obviously advice to them for direct programming to, to address their most immediate needs for people impacted by the pandemic. Forty percent would be to allocate for an array of projects, which we have not actually yet seen, but it would be a, sort of a placeholder for things related to the downtown revisioning plan. There could be everything from street trees to, you know, helping with extending sidewalks, to, you know, putting in streetlights, any of those kinds of things, where we already have a channel to go through, which is the destination TIF. So that's one way for, for us to get channeled, one way, not the only way. And then the third category would be the, a single infrastructure project, which we, in my opinion, hopefully would be something that benefits a large percentage, if not all of the community, and, and that could. that benefits a large percentage, if not all of the community. And and that could be that could be anything that we that we come up with. So that's a start of the conversation. I think the the only action item, we don't have to decide on the ratios tonight. The only action item I think that is timely for us in the month of April is to elect to take the funds as in a bulk sum, all 903,000.
Yeah, if you want, I can kind of.
Great.
clarify that for you. So essentially what it is, is the Treasury portal is now open for any U's which are non entitlement units to do their annual reporting. And so for this, since March 31st of 2021 to now, we have to report to the Treasury what has been done with the funds. And so you've committed and expended already the amounts for the premium pay for emergency responders, and that was to the tune of $153,649.43. Your total ARPA funding award was actually $904,910.16. So that actually leaves a balance of $751,260.73. And since just about the beginning of this year, the Treasury came out with enhanced guidelines on how to assist municipalities in in particular any U's because those are your smaller municipalities that received lower funding requests, right? They didn't want these municipalities to have to go through the extensive reporting for someone that's receiving 10 million or more dollars, right? So the Treasury came back with some guidance that basically said, if you would like, you can allow or adopt the standard standard revenue loss allowance of up to $10 million, not to exceed your award amount. So our award amount is the 904,000 previously mentioned. Okay? And essentially by doing that, what it means is prior to this, there were expense categories, like one through seven, I believe. And each expense category kind of dictated what you could spend your money on and what you would have to do for reporting requirements if you chose that category. And so each of these categories has varying levels of support that you need to supply, as John was mentioning, whether it be Davis Bacon Wage Acts, procurement policies, uniform guidance, audit restrictions. So there's a lot of a lot of hoops essentially that you would have to go through to to pick one of these expense categories. And before, one of the expense categories was revenue loss. However, you had to actually calculate and document that you had a revenue loss. So Treasury's response to feedback and work with the GFOA and other entities was let's have a standard allowance. If you're under, you know, if your award is under $10 million, you can use that as your standard allowance and your your reporting requirements are limited to basically saying, yes, we've received 904,000 of ARPA funding and we are going to spend it on this. And and I'm kind of umbrellaing this for you, but it's almost that simple, where you just have to narrate what you're doing to spend that money on the general course of governmental services. Okay? Which is that's the link. So it has to be in your general course of governmental service. So general assistance that we offer as indicated in one of the percentages, right? The downtown visioning stuff, we have appropriations for doing our downtown work. I did ask in particular about sewer infrastructure or utility infrastructure when they are a separate district and not part of the town. They would the the thought is because you don't get finalized guidance, but you can get opinion, right? The thought is that they would be considered a sub recipient because they're not the receader of those funds and it's not in the general course of our governmental operations. So they would qualify as a sub recipient and we would actually be responsible for all of that reporting and holding them accountable and not allowing funds unless we have the information that we need to do the reporting that's required, or we become on the hook for that money, if that makes sense. So just to kind of clarify that a little bit further.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yes.
Right terms.
And to clarify, the reason this is important is now is they've released that just earlier this year, that standard $10 million allowance under that amount, the 900,000 would clearly qualify. But that has to be, you told me that has to be reported by April 30.
That's what I was just going to say is so our first reporting deadline, because we are in NEU, the first reporting deadline is April 30th of 2022. And we report annually thereafter. So because this is a new requirement, if we are adopting the standard allowance, we have to do so in this reporting period because there's no guarantee that those requirements will remain for the next reporting period. So if we miss this window, we may still have sub recipient and and reporting requirements placed on us. And not to say that we can't with this, you know, Treasury is always expanding, right? And and tweaking guidance. I mean, they had an interim final rule for over a year before they came out with the final rule just a few months ago. So, you know, there's nothing to say that it can't change, but what we're hearing for guidance at this point is if you adopt it by this point, you're more likely to be in that realm of narration versus sub recipients and tracking in that manner. So what we would what we are actually asking for, because you have already expended and obligated the amount for the premium fund, we would be asking for you to elect to use the standard allowance for the remaining $751,260.73. That allows you to you can further allocate the use of these for general governmental services at a future meeting. It doesn't need to be decided for April 30th. You just need to say we're adopting the standard allowance for the for use in general governmental services.
Once we do that, how long do we have before we have to spend?
So you have to you have to appropriate it prior to the end of 2024, and they have to be expended by 2026.
Okay, so I think. So we don't have to do.
Yes. And I would I would highly encourage you to take that time and not do it all in a year because there's auditing restrictions as well. Once you hit a threshold of spending federal funds, your audit is much more expansive if you spend a threshold of federal funds. Whereas if we if we do under, I think it's, I'm going to say, I believe it's if we spend more than 750,000 in federal funds in a year, we have to have a special audit. So if you stay, you know, obviously that's at our cap, but you know, if you spread this out over the few years to see where the projects take you and where we may want to go, you're it's completely within your your realm to do so as long as you have it appropriated by 2024 and expended by 2026. Otherwise, it goes back to the Treasury.
Council Bradley?
Yeah, it all sounds good. The question that's tickling my mind is this whole notion of governmental services, you know, picking that category. And I guess my question is, there's lots of things in this town that were affected by COVID that are arguably not as close to governmental services as FCS is. Maybe public interest projects that we would want to fund, or maybe even private ones. To what extent are we limiting our ability to allocate the $715,000 if we select the government general government services category as the way we receive those funds?
Sure. So my my understanding at this point is you can adopt this as, you know, the the receipt, right? And if we end up expending it under a different expense category, we would just be held to that standard of reporting. So let's say, you know, you accept it all as the as the standard allowance, right? And then you choose to fund, I'll use the utility, you know, a utility project. You would then have to do the sub recipient sub recipient reporting and monitoring for that component of those funds. We would just change the designation.
And we have the flexibility to do that at any point?
That is my understanding.
That would be important.
This is all new for everybody. So, you know, I'm kind of, I, you know, I hate feeling like I'm going out on a limb with it, but that's my understanding.
But I mean, I guess I, you know, would hate to find out that we had money for good purposes that we couldn't use because we'd made a quick decision on April, whatever today is, about an easy way to to bring it into our fold. If if the answer is we don't have suffer any different adverse consequence than if we hadn't done that, then I don't have any problem, you know? It may affect what we decide to fund. I get that, but that would have been true in the beginning anyway. So I'd I'd like us to know whether that means or that method of receiving funds in any way, in what ways it limits our ability to grant those funds to projects, whether it's under the revisioning or under the the general.
Sure. MMA's recommendation through some of the webinars that I've attended, I've attended quite a few webinars on this topic. And my impression is that, you know, their their thought is that this this designation is the best case scenario for 95% of the municipalities in Maine. Like this is this is truly designed for these smaller municipalities that have under that level of funding, you know, maybe communities like Portland, I'll just use them, receive much more than $10 million and have that greater need.
Or the counties that received hundreds.
Or the county, exactly. So, you know, this this truly is, it doesn't limit what you can do with the funds. I mean, other than you being used for general governmental services. And I mean, that can be anything from, you know, your paving to your fire to infrastructure to.
I get it. It's a great, it's a great subsidy for for our municipal budget. Perfect. But it's not what I think some of us had hoped it would be used for to support the revision of this town into an experience that involves both municipal as well as private expenditures. And, you know, certainly that's been part of the discussion in our committee about how that would play out and how and nobody's made any decisions, but clearly there are differences of of emphasis in this. But if you if you're excluding, I mean, all of those sort of, unless you're saying, you know, because it's part of the revisioning process, it's not, it's a governmental service. And so no matter whether the money goes to Lynda Bean for something she's doing with her antique store that we think is cool because it connects to what's happening in this area here, we might want to fund that. I don't know that we would. We wouldn't, but that's an example, you know? And so are we cutting all of those things out by choosing this general category of of receipt category?
I think the only thing you're cutting out is something you wouldn't appropriate tax dollars for. So if it's something that you would fund as part of, if it's part of the downtown vision and it's something that we're going to spend dollars on, it's general governmental business. I mean, we're like, for example, the money that we've paid to principal group to do the plan would have all been under this category because it's something you expended funds.
I'm not worried about what is under the category.
But even even if it's not, we could put all of this money into paving and other things and then have that money that we would have spent to do other, you know, to do whatever we wanted. So it's going to be a wash.
Yeah, that's true. If if I just don't see, I'm sorry, this isn't a slash on this council. It's just that we don't, we aren't that coordinated to 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 match A to B to C to get the result. Somebody might come in with a convincing proposal for doing something that isn't within that. And then somebody say, yeah, we'll fund that out of, we'll pay, we'll use paving money to do that, and then we'll use the paving money to do that. I still think we're going to have a problem unless it's something that's under destination TIF.
Those are the strings that come with the money, though.
Well, I don't know. That's what I'm asking. Is is if we don't if we don't do this tonight, right? We leave ourselves, we can still take the money, right?
Yeah.
But we have, we will in the future have to designate the sub recipients who will receive the money if it's not.
Yes, it greatly expands your reporting requirements.
Also, doesn't it also greatly expand the the scope of people you can give money to?
Potentially, but you have to, you have to have people in place to justify that. So let's say, let's give the example of, well, let me, let me think about.
Take the historical society, okay?
Well, what I'm, so let's just say there's a, there's a population in Freeport that needs this assistance, right? And let's say that we, you choose to help certain residents with their rent, okay? And I'm going to use this outside of our general assistance right now. Let's just, let's forget that we do general assistance for a minute and just say we have people that need help with their rent. You then have to show what demographic that you're assisting and how they were impacted by COVID and the fact that you met all of the requirements of of like equitability, right? And that you're not just handpicking people. You have to show the percentage to the population. There's just a lot more support in, which I'm not saying is not doable. Please don't get me wrong with that. But you're going to have to hire someone to do it, essentially. So, you know, it just, and it's doable. I'm all I'm saying is that by accepting.
Not as simple.
It's it's not, it's not as easy as just saying yes, no, accept and done. It just.
Why am I not correct? And I'm just supposed to be my last moment on this subject. But why am I not correct in looking at what John has proposed after our discussion and saying, you know, this is just a major governmental governmental support bill. We're going to, we're supporting FCS because that's general assistance, and that's what we do. We're supporting downtown revisioning to the extent that it is municipal projects that are are being supported as opposed to private ones. And the last ones are the infrastructure projects for the town. So this is, this is $900,000 that's coming to the town of Freeport.
That's the intent of the spending.
That's the intent of the ARPA funding.
No, it isn't. I'm sorry. As I understood it, it was to help people in the community that suffered from COVID.
There's a component of it that is allowed for that as well. The but the, yes.
Council Fornia?
So we have two items. Number one, the first item, we have a date that we should say we're going to take the money, and that's coming up on April 30th.
Well, we have, we have the money. What this allows us to do is to accept the funding for use of general governmental services without having to do all of the reporting of what gets done with the funding after the fact.
Which brings me to my second question. So if we we have got to accept the money, which we have, once we make a designation, the way that's going, we're probably locked into where those funds go, I would imagine. Say we took the list that's been proposed tonight. We say we're going to put this much here, that much there. Once you submit that to the federal government, I'm sure we'll lock in.
Yeah. So I'm, I don't actually submit to them what you're doing with it until until you obligate those funds. So when you make the decision to obligate the funds, then I will submit and say, this is what's been obligated. All they're going to care about in the end is what you actually expended on. And so basically what I'm saying is you're you're obligating the funds for general governmental services, which eliminates the reporting requirements of it in the future.
But if we want to change it, that is right now.
As of right now, that's my understanding.
Right. But if at some point it wasn't under governmental services, we just tell them, hey, we we had a change here, and then we have different reporting.
Exactly. We're going to do expense category 2.5 instead of a category 6.1. Exactly. I'm, I can't point to you to speak, but.
No, I know.
Sorry, I was just.
Ed's point is we may potentially be missing out on some of the one through seven, or is this, this is a separate. But but the enumerated permitted uses in the ARPA spending priorities that set by Treasury, set by law, you have to do one of those things. There may be some of those things in one through five or one through six or whatever that are not general governmental purposes.
Correct.
That if we set this money aside, we don't have that money for that. However, 99% of what we do is general government purposes is not something that's in one through six over here. So it actually opens up a whole wide range. So like helping people who've been negatively affected by COVID, like rent, things like that, helping businesses that have been negatively affected by COVID, those are in those enumerated uses under the law. However, we could also use it to build a playground at a school that is not an enumerated use if it's a general governmental purpose. So it.
If we would normally do that in the course of our.
That kind of cuts both ways, doesn't it? It is, it is saying that not that we may not use it for these other non. It is, it is saying that not, that we may not use it for these other non-governmental-
This is the most flexible use of the funding allowed by treasury.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes. And they state that in every webinar is that this allows you the most flexibility for use of funding.
But at the same time, there are a few things that may not be considered general governmental purposes that are enumerated in the original-
Correct.
The regs that, or the current-
Exactly, like the vaccination sites. I mean, the whole first category is about vaccination testing and, you know, setting out the, the sites and-
Stormwater, water sewer, those kind of things, right? Like those original uses that came on the interim final rule that may, I don't even know if they're in the final rule that you're looking at now.
They still are, yes.
So they're all in the January 1 guidance, right?
Yep.
But this is a separate category of an enumerated use that was allowed that would open up at least $10 million in an NEU to be spent on any governmental purpose.
Correct.
Is that a safe way to summarize it?
Yes.
But it may not be some of the enumerated uses in the individual if we-
Right. The enumerated uses are very specific, which is what I'm getting at. They are very specific and have very specific reporting requirements and stipulations that you must meet in order for it to be considered that eligible expense. And if you don't meet them and follow those guidelines, you're responsible for that funding and they won't, they, they will require you to pay them that money back if it's not met, right? This is the broadest category that you can have with the most flexible use possible of, of service.
So if you were to accept it for helping people who've been disrupted by COVID, there are, I'm assuming demographic requirements. There are income requirements. You have to show that they had an actual loss or something like that, some demonstrated hit.
Yes. There has to be demonstration. There will be a lot of hoops that the individuals have to go through to prove what they're asking for.
If it's accepted under what you're talking about tonight, we can use that money and say, FCS, here's a check for $1,000 that you can get, give up to people-
For general assistance.
For, for non, people who don't qualify for general assistance but are in need because of recent economic times.
Because we do general assistance with them, yes.
Because they do our governmental work.
Because we still pay for that, like, like my recommendation in that situation, okay?
We could bring somebody here to give that money.
Well, my recommendation in that situation is, is the way it's handled now, right? People go down to FCS, they put in their request, the town of Freeport pays for that request. It would be the same thing. They would go to FCS, they, they kind of funnel the, the request, right? But it comes to the town and we pay it. And that's general assistance. That's your general governmental service. It qualifies at that level.
So it gives us the last one. So we could either say, we want to get all, we want some of the money to go to these people. We poured a lot on it. We couldn't take it back and say, oh, well, let's go give it to general assistance because it's an easy way to go.
We might or we may not be able to take it back next year. And quote, I think what, yeah.
I mean, if we pick the category that said COVID relief or-
Once you've appropriated and sent the money to them, yes.
Right. We can't say, well, not even send it to them. We appropriated, told the government appropriated. We couldn't say, whoops, wait a second, there's a better way to do it. Let's give this to general assistance and let them handle it. And then we don't have to do all the reporting.
You may be able to do that or you may not next year.
Right.
It's not guaranteed, but, but maybe, but maybe not.
But right, but I'm, I'm just trying to say right now, this is the most flexible way for us to be able to spend the money instead of earmarking it for a specific-
Right. And I would encourage you, I would encourage you when you get to a point where you have specific designations that you want, right? That, just like with the premium pay, right? So the, the example with the premium pay is we obligated, and I think John had it in his email, $160,500. We only expended $153,649.43, right? All treasury cares about is that $153,649.43, not what was physically obligated. So they're not gonna say, we don't have that remaining $7,000 to deal with, right? They, they just care about what was finally expended. So it, kind of to expand upon your discussion, if you, if you obligate for a specific use but only expend a certain amount, I, my understanding at this point is it would open up, we would kind of close that project, right? And we would re-obligate those funds as long as it's within the timeframe of being obligated before 2024, right? And expended by 2026, that you could still do that. This just is what the treasury threw feedback through all these, you know, nationwide municipalities to say, hey, we need more flexibility. We've had, this has been a major impact to everybody and what are you asking for in this requirement? Like, these small municipalities do not have the staff to handle this reporting requirement.
Including us.
Including us. And so they came up with this standard allowance, which, you know, I can, you know, get the recordings of the webinars where it says to you, this is the most flexible use of your funding that you are going to find.
We can figure out a way to get it.
But there are other specific uses if you have them. And it's perfectly fine to do those. What I'm suggesting is that when you obligate for that, you have to be prepared for those reporting requirements and do it that-
So one of those items, let's say in the future we decide to do one of those items like a utility payment to water or sewer, for example, for a project, an infrastructure project like what John is talking about or, or put forward. Just obligating this money under, accepting this money under the general revenue loss, if we haven't spent it on something, doesn't mean we're gonna be able to take $200,000 and pay it out for a non-governmental purpose and avoid reporting. If it's one of those enumerated things and we have to spend money on it in the future, we still have that same reporting requirement.
Exactly.
So like if we choose to use $200,000-
For this water investment, exactly.
Or a $700,000 or any amount between.
You will, you will obligate it to that expense category at that time.
Unless it's something that we would do as governmental use.
Through normal governmental service.
So helping those that are in need, for example, we keep coming back to that. That is something that, as we could say is our general governmental purpose and not do it under the reporting requirements of that. However, if it wasn't something we were doing already, we would have to use those standards in those ARPA categories.
So the, the spark in my email was to get the conversation going, which we apparently have. I'd like to go back to the, the action on this item, which is, are we going to
Yes.
vote to accept it as general, general government, I gotta read the language here, general revenue loss as a result of, of COVID-19 so that we can provide the maximum flexibility to our staff to minimize the amount of reporting on the allocation of funds, the $904,000.
I would be for that.
So we have a motion?
Yeah, I motion that we accept the, I motion that we accept the proposal as read by Vice Chair Ian.
Right, to elect to use the standard allowance up to $10 million not to exceed our total award allocation for identifying revenue loss.
Where does it say governmental services in there or is that implied?
That is the stipulation when you get to the treasury portal, that when you, when you adopt this as for identifying revenue loss, that, that is the, like, next set of questions is, you know, and I'm, actually, I think I have it.
These revenue replacement funds will be further allocated to general government services at a future meeting.
Right. So the question on, within the portal is-
Second.
Please provide an explanation of how revenue replacement funds were allocated to government services. So that's, and that's all you have to do is do a narrative to say, we provided general assistance to our, you know, residents. It would be almost as simple as that one sentence.
We did, we did downtown projects that were identified by our downtown visioning plan as a municipal priority.
Exactly.
And listing those projects out.
Exactly.
So we have a motion to-
Can I just give me one more second at this?
Yeah, there's a second, Jake.
No, can we have one more, this minute of discussion? So as I'm, I'm understanding this right now, we have ARPA funds coming to us and we can elect to take them under this portal, which would be all of what we have left as basically money that we would allocate in a general governmental services component. In addition, we have as places we could, or things we could fund are those which were specifically identified like sewer and other things in the original ARPA regulations. And then as our third level of flexibility, if we decided neither of those worked for us, we, and just, I'm not imagining what that could be, but that there could be something that, that doesn't fit in either of those two categories that we decide we want to fund with these ARPA funds. We can still do it, but we just have to go into reporting requirements that are onerous.
I apologize because with this, I didn't hear all that you asked, but I believe you are correct.
I, I don't think we have an unlimited list of what we can choose, though.
Right. It's not, there's not an unlimited list anywhere of what you can do with the funds. I mean, even this revenue loss selection is limited to general governmental services. If we provide it through our current general operating fund and/or budget as a whole now, it would, it would be covered under this umbrella of revenue loss, right? So if we, if we go through budget discussions and we're talking about stuff and have talked about stuff for years, it would be covered under this umbrella. If you're looking for something more specific, it has to meet one of the expense categories listed as an eligible use for ARPA funding.
Well, take, I'm sorry. I, it's, I just hate to get into a situation where something I did on the spot, read something five minutes ago restricts a lot of money that might go someplace that made sense. So what, what I'm asking is if, say we were doing things typically under downtown destination TIF, which covers a whole broad range of things that we've decided are governmental in nature, then we could say they're, they're governmental services generally within the allocation.
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine.
If we, if we spend it right now through the destination TIF or through municipal facilities or the operating budget or any, any, you know, current budget that we discuss as a town council, it, that's, would be considered our general governmental service.
Thank you for the help.
Might, might I suggest that there, there's a motion in a second that there, I think they're gonna direct you, us, to accept that, you through the portal to do that. Might I add, maybe the understanding is you and I will research, mostly you, maybe I'll help out if you need some, but we'll research to make sure that, because I want to make sure of this too, that we're not blocking ourselves from using one of the other obligated enumerated very specific purposes. So for example, utilities, if we want to go through, you may decide, hey, we, the sewer district doesn't want $200,000, doesn't want to do Davis Bacon and Buy American and all these things for $200,000, or they may decide they want to, but that's a negotiation, a discussion that needs to happen with the water, with the sewer company, within the district. But can we not, can we not hit submit on this and let the council understand that we're, you and I aren't gonna sign off and hit submit on this for the 700 and whatever thousand if that blocks us from the future purposes? Or you, Jake, you're probably gonna say, but we can just add-
We just spent $1.6 million and we could just allocate that however we, we could just erase $700,000 of it right now.
You could put it all to Mallett Drive next year for $1.7 million. I mean, it could all be one paving project.
Hit submit. This is a good thing.
Stop worrying about the-
And then we can make new priorities after. Thank you.
And use our currently existing reserve fund money to do something like-
Because if, if we wanted a COVID testing site, we could, we have money, we could do that. And we would just shift this ARPA money to cover the losses that, you know, we-
The paving.
You can, you can always find general governmental services to, to use this money on and budget for something else. Absolutely. Right.
So the money we save using this money could then be allocated by the council for another place.
It'd be opened up for another council.
All right, we have a motion and a second to direct staff to accept the funds under the most flexible plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, six to zero. More lively discussion to come.
Thank you.
Not to belabor this, but can we have a timeline on how we're gonna, how we're gonna work on this? Because while I do think we have some long-term priorities, I think that, you know, giving money to FCS and to support the folks that have been negatively impacted this whole time, can't wait till fiscal year '24 and then divvy it out. I mean, people are hurting now, so I don't want us to rush on anything and I absolutely think we should wait till Dan's back so that's the entire council. But let's see if we can agree on the framework and allocate some of this money where it can do some good before we say, okay, let's take it up in the fall. I just think it's gonna be too late.
I completely agree. I might recommend that we do it at the second meeting in May since we just set four public hearings for the May 3 meeting, which is already gonna be a long meeting.
I just don't want it to be months from now.
Yeah, so maybe work with the chair to get that onto the May, was it 17th? Thank you, Bob. May 17th council meeting agenda.
The town clerk's already got a placeholder in the agenda slot right down there. I see your writing, so, yeah.
So what I would not like to see happen would be, you know, Matt thinks it's FCS and somebody thought it was the premium pay and that we go through personal preferences to where out of money. I'd like to see some process to put the projects we thought were reasonable in, in a bucket and establish priorities for the money based on our collective judgment. Is there a way we could work that into the, let, let people know that this is an opportunity to apply if you meet the criteria and?
Well, I think we kind of covered that ground in that, in that we decided that having an open RFP process is extremely staff-intensive and leads to individual lobbying and I like this and I like that and winners and losers and, and gets, you know, five people really thrilled and the other 35 really unhappy. And I'm not sure that we want to be creating more divisiveness with, with the process. And at least that was, that was my understanding was for the conversation in the smaller group was to come up with a short list of recommendations that we could sort of dial the knob in and fine tune, whether it's 30, 30, 40 or 20, 50, you know, whatever it is, that we can, we can negotiate on that. But to, to not open it up, we were trying to close it to, not close it, but to funnel it in to have a more specific set of recommendations or else I think, I think you're right, all seven of us up here could be talking about our individual ideas about what to do with this for, for months and months and months.
I wouldn't want it to be months and months and months, but I'd hate to miss an opportunity to fund something that was a real need because, you know, it either doesn't fit in that or we didn't know about it or we didn't think about it or we, it just didn't, I mean, I, I don't know where, I shouldn't say that. I obviously participated in that discussion, but that, I wouldn't have written that memo exactly that way based on the discussions I had and that's not a complaint. It's just how it came out. And so, you know, I can think of, I don't know. Maybe that's right.
And I think the, the point that Councilor Pillsbury just made was not to cut off the dialogue and discernment of how we go through that, but that there's an immediate need right now for a lot of people that FCS is seeing. So I think that's, that was his point to move something forward. So, Councilor Danielle?
I would suggest that we do the Island Rover portion right now and then we set a time like nine o'clock or something. And anytime we have, after doing Island Rover, we can talk about this. I think that's important, but then we're not here all night. I'm afraid if we continue ARPA discussions, we'll run out of time for the other thing. And I think we're gonna get out at a reasonable hour. So if we set nine o'clock, and that's, you know, 50 minutes from now, it's a, still a substantial amount of time to talk. But, because I would like to discuss what you guys came up with and why and how I would suggest modifying it slightly here or there, not big changes, just my take.
I, I think that's a great idea because it'll allow us to then have a more productive meeting in May if we get some of this back and forth out of the way now. And we don't have anything else, we have one item on the agenda, let's move through that and-
Well, is it worth having?
Limited to an hour.
That's possible. Yeah, the question was, you know, was it, is it valid or worthwhile for the council to have a, a non-meeting workshop on this issue so that it's the agenda item instead of trying to do it with other agenda items?
But we have 50 minutes right now. I mean, depending on, I would suggest, let's do it right now.
I don't disagree that we should move on with our next item and then maybe have a conversation after that if, if the group is willing. All right, so our next item on other business, which happens to be our last item on the agenda, is discussion on potential Island Rover launch and progress towards such. Councilor Bradley.
Since I was away for much of the consolidation, I had a meeting with Adam and Peter before I left and generally decided that they would take the lead on presenting the options to the council and I would-
And I would weigh in sort of politically at the end, so I defer to Peter.
Sure, yeah. I'll do a background and Adam can talk about specifics. So the Island Rover, it's a boat, you may have heard now, I won't get that, I won't get that idiotic. As everyone up here is aware, there's been an ongoing conflict, attempts at resolution of the Island Rover saga, I think is the best way to put it, which encompasses several issues. The, the most significant of which is the launch. I think the town has determined that the, the primary goal for the town over the last several years, although there have been lawsuits and potential land use questions and things like that about properties, the primary focus has been eyes on getting it in the water, if that's at all possible. I don't think it's the only thing that's going on, but that is the quickest way to it not being an issue or the other issues being resolved is that there's a launch here. So the last time this was discussed was probably four or five years ago. There were several different options that were looked at for launch. I think the, the owners or developers of the boat, I'm not sure of the right legal definition to use, the, the other parties involved that want to launch the Island Rover. The Island Rover Foundation, Harold Arnt is, was the leader of that. Carter Becker, Falls Point Marine, have taken interest and worked to get this thing launched as well. So those are kind of the three or four parties we're talking about. There were four, three and a half locations identified at the time. Shore Drive was one of those locations where they would either use a piece of private property or a boat ramp at the end of Shore Drive. There were other potential looks at Marietta Lane property, Little Flying Point, and also Wolf's Neck Farm. At the time, several years ago, the primary focus from the other parties involved in the Island Rover saga was Shore Drive as the location that was feasible, in their opinion. The town got an application for over-the-road transport, because it's an overweight. We had a hearing here, the last official action the town took on the potential launch. The council did not approve that because there were all kinds of legal objections that were raised by abutters as to who owned the actual ramp that was going to be used and whether the people had a right to use the ramp. The town at that time was strongly encouraging and did for several years afterwards, looking at other locations, because the Shore Drive locations were very controversial, I would say, that's putting it mildly. It just, there were a lot of problems with the various Shore Drive proposals and locations. So Ed started a conversation when he got on the council with the, with the other parties involved here. We did a little bit of work with them. We did some cleanup on some of the sites with just some force account money, essentially town labor to do that work. I think that was successful in the stated goal, which was to get people working together, saying, hey, we can actually maybe try to accomplish something here. And the other parties involved started looking at other sites as potential launch sites. So they approached us, I won't get the date right, so I won't say it, but in the recent past, with the Wolf's Neck location as a potential launch location. That would be transporting over the town road the entire way to a point that would require private property to be crossed to get Wolf's Neck Farm property to get into the water.
Is that the Burnett Bridge?
It's close to the Burnett Bridge, but I would say right before, immediately before the Burnett Bridge on the Flying Point side was the site that it was located. That was, that has been studied in greater detail as we go forward. So I would say the original proposals, the original location, like Shore Drive location for potential launch of the Island Rover, Adam and I were discussing this earlier today. The best way to describe it was there were red flags that were put up. Maybe it was, would have been doable in the end, but the town had significant concern about legal rights and crossing properties and things like that, that the council stepped back and said, we're not willing to go further on this, the council at the time, because we might get ourselves in the middle of something that there are two warring parties that don't care about us and we're going to get caught in the crossfire. So this second locate, this, this kind of more recent attempt at resolution, at launch of, of the vessel was good, because I think it didn't start with those red flags. And I would say there's a whole bunch of questions that we have. Adam's going to get into some of the specifics about details, about things that still need to be resolved. I might call them yellow flags or slightly yellow flags, things that we need to look at and be careful of and do some analysis on. But at this point, barring, barring something coming up, there's not a red flag that's saying that this isn't doable, that this isn't a plausible plan. I think there's a lot of information that still needs to get worked out.
For the, for the Wolf's Neck site.
For the Wolf's Neck site. One of the primary things that needs to get worked out is, and the town will play a significant role in this, and I think that's what the discussion tonight is, is whether the town is willing to play that role going on the behalf of the other parties that are trying to launch the vessel to Wolf's Neck Farm and saying, hey, the town's probably going to approve the first half of this. Is this something you can work with them on as a location? That's a private property issue that the town has no official say in, but may play a significant role in, just as we would in any potential launch site on private property, not just that. The Marietta Lane property that was kind of discounted before would be another instance where the town would need to probably have some role to play in that. But right now, that's not, it's not something that's being considered. So I guess after, we're going to do, Adam's going to do a little bit of presentation about the, the technical specifics. And I think, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking for a general comfort check from the council. Is this something that the town should play a part in going forward, working to help, you know, the other parties launch the vessel, going to the property owners and, you know, considering, saying, yep, if, if these concerns are met, we would go through our permitting process. If you can meet our permitting standards, we would let it go forward and encourage and work with the other, the property owners and the private interests. It may, there may be other private interests that we want to work with, including utility companies and things like that. But is the town comfortable being a mediator, kind of an intervenor type of entity here, helping them move it along? Or the alternative is? Yeah, we can't stop you, but good luck.
Well, let's listen to what Adam has to say then.
So, Adam, do you want to maybe present a little on the specifics of the, of the discussed or chosen launch site that's being examined? And, and some of the, the conversations and follow-up conversations that you've had to date? Hold on, I got to make sure you got volume here. Oh, your speakers aren't on. Hold on.
Can you hear me okay? I lost audio. Can you hear me okay?
Just like that on Magic Try. Go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, great. So I'd rather not get bogged down into the details, but I'm happy to discuss them and any questions you may have. It'd probably, probably be helpful to maybe orient ourselves with a map and show, at least spatially on the face of the earth, what tonight's conversation is about. Peter, could you grant me some screen sharing?
I've got it. Yep, I just did.
Thank you. I'll start with the overall picture, the overall map view, I mean. And I trust you can see Google Earth. And what you're looking at is, the boat currently sits on Bucknum Road, which is this little gravel private road where my cursor is. And the proposal is to transport it along Byram Avenue, Lower Flying Point, down Burnett Road, to a little sliver of private property, and I'm zooming in now, owned by Wolf's Neck Center, immediately adjacent to the Burnett Road Bridge. That bridge is a town-owned bridge. It conveys tidal water between the little river in this, this particular bay. And the applicant has identified this route as a feasible option. And town staff met with the applicant, their attorneys, and we identified a number of items that we felt should be provided for the conversation to continue. And some of them are general, some of them are quite technical, requiring third-party review. And we had subsequent conversations between technical reviewers, marine engineering specialists, soil foundation engineers, myself, in terms of the transportation part of it, the transport part of it. And we have a summary letter that all parties agree is information needed to complete the launch design. The tricky part of all this is which comes first, approaching the landowner or completing the design? And, which is to say there's some give and take here. Approaching the landowner should really occur next before completing the launch design, in our opinion, because considerable expense needs to be outweighed for completing those, that design. And so that's the, that's the background or the history behind the request over the past four months or so. And zooming back out, the, the launch design can be broken down into three segments. And this is, this is outlined in a memo, in a memo I sent. Assuming you haven't had adequate time to review it. Segment one is the actual transport over the roadways, which I talked about earlier. Segment two is, I'm zooming back in, is if allowed by the property owner, and council for that matter, would be the placement of that vessel, the Island Rover vessel, on a trestle rail system that connects ground into the water. And a good way to think about, actually, I'll, I'll show you a little schematic of that in a second. That, so that's segment two along the rails. Segment three is, zooming back out here, from its placement in the water with adequate tide depths, to be towed out to sea by a barge. I think what I'll do is stop sharing and go to a different screen to help give you a visual on what the rail system might look like. So what we're looking at is if you can imagine yourself standing on Burnett Road, this is the bridge where my cursor is. This is the Wolf's Neck, a little, this is the Wolf's Neck Center property. And this is a, really a schematic of the rail system that would guide the, the boat down into.
Adam, Adam, can you make that a little bigger? We're having trouble seeing the detail.
Dimensions aren't really.
Can you make that a little bigger? Can you zoom in, Adam, on the, the graphic?
Oh, yes. Sorry, I was.
Yeah, thank you.
The audio cut out.
There we go.
And this, this is purely a schematic, but think of it as rails with a foundation affixed to the ground and on mats in the water that are used to guide the vessel in this segment two I'm talking about. I think a better picture for you to maybe wrap your head around is this picture here, which is a profile. And which, from left to right, you're looking at the ground on Wolf's Neck property with steel rails fixed to the ground and mats on, in the waterside.
And Adam, the, this Egan, the, the, on the high end of that slope is something to be constructed. That's not naturally occurring bank right there, right? That's something that's going to be constructed?
Nope, that's the natural.
Oh, that's ledge? Okay. Great.
Yep. So that, it's a good question. That's something the applicant knows. They'll need to provide or demonstrate adequate information in terms of how the, the rails are connected into that ground. Their proposal is with steel anchors to either be removed after completion or cut flush with the ground so that you'll never know that they were ever there. But that's, that's part of the foundation design the marine engineer knows he needs to provide. And the town will rely on a geotechnical or soils engineer to verify their calculations. It's a very specialized engineering discipline and one reserved for geotechnical engineers. Same applies to the mat foundation system within, within the channel. So what's important about, there, there are many aspects to this. Another important component is the applicant has to demonstrate tie, the tides are high enough to raise the boat and its weight and its keel depth and width such that it can be essentially spun around and then towed out to sea. As I mentioned, I was hesitant to get bogged down into the details, because the, really the purpose of tonight is to, to hear from council whether there's enough information or enough, enough information provided to give a conditional ascent. I use the word ascent intentionally. Think of it as, we, we don't want to call it approval, because there's some, there's some more design that needs to be done. But is there enough information provided for the town to reach out to the landowner? And before, which has to, which should happen before moving on to the, the next level of design.
Councilor Fornier?
This project has been going on for 20 years?
I think you're being generous, probably longer than that, yeah.
So it, it has been a lot of lawsuits, a lot of money expended. I personally think it's time that we move it forward, and, and we need to help make this a success. You know, making sure that our roads and stuff are protected when we move the boat over there. But I, I think it'd be great, you know, Ed's done a lot of work on this and, and I'd love to see it happen. So I would fully support moving forward and, and seeing a formal plan coming to make this happen.
Councilor Arnt?
I feel the same way.
Councilor Bradley?
Yeah, I, just to help guide the, the decision tonight, this is not the last time. This will be in front of you. And up to get it to this point, it hasn't just been, oh, it took time. We've, we've sat down with people who really know what they're doing and what they're talking about and have done this. And they have assessed what Grindel comes up with, and they say two things. One, Grindel's a real deal. This is, this is not a fly-by-night marine guy. This is a guy who knows what he's doing. And two, he is not, he has not yet done the details, because they haven't paid him to do the details yet, okay? And the reason they haven't paid him to do the details yet is they explain it to us is essentially, until they get some idea that this is a, conceptually a way we're prepared to go, they're not going to spend, whatever it is, 10 to 25, $30,000. So Grindel agreed, I think for free, I'm not sure, to put together the, the points of development of the plan that need to occur before he feels confident he could do it. So he's not saying, I can do it. He's saying, I, I believe I can do it. People do things like this all the time on the coast of Maine. It just looks big to us, because it's on Byram Avenue. You know, but not to underestimate either the risk, there is some risk. And so he's saying, if I could go through the assessment and come up with, it's a go for me, I'd feel comfortable. Our guys said, well, you know, here are the things in addition to what you think you'd want to do that we think you, you should take a look at, added that list to the, the deal. He's agreed that they're right about that as well. It's a real back-and-forth collaborative at this point. And what, the question in front of us is, do we feel enough has been done? Enough, you know, preliminary due diligence has been done that we can allow it to go to the next step? And then the question becomes, in what order do you do that? I mean, do you, do you? I mean, do you, do you just say, okay, we, we can't give you approval? We, we're not the approval pa- be a party here. All you're looking to us for is to be an intermediary with the Wolf Next Center. And I just want to, maybe they're listening, maybe they're not. But, um, I've had conversations with Dave Herring and with some of the people on the board. And, you know, it, it went south the last time because of the way it was done. It was just not done well. I mean, from a, Carter and, and Harold did not present this to them and then ask for their views. They, they just said, we're going to do it here. And I can imagine what Wolf Neck said. This is a very narrow sliver of Wolf Neck. It's, if you, it's, if, if I told you it's from here to the door, I'd be almost right.
I think it might be smaller than that.
It might be. It's, it's, it's not anything that takes up a lot of land or will even when it's being done, e- engage a lot of their property. So I don't think that's the concern. The concern's going to be more about timing. You know, they have cows out there, they have people coming all summer. That may be the time these people think that they ought to do it. Though that's going to be part of the, the discussion going forward. But I, eh, eh, at the end of the day, it seems to me, we got to go to Wolf Neck and say, do us a favor. You know, we're, we're working hard on this. Uh, we've been working hard on it. It would be a great narrative, a great result if we could float this thing. You'd be part of that success. We'd all be working together. But if you can't do it, no blame.
Right.
No, I've said, we will not look at you and say, you, duh, 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 duh. We say, okay, we asked you to do it for your reason, you say no. Um, so again, I want to be sure everybody knows that this isn't a high-pressure, uh, town demand on Wolf Neck. This is a, a request that they help us out. Question is, do you guys want to ask them to help us out? You know, and I, and I've heard you say yes, I appreciate that. But that's sort of all I can say in terms of the politics of it.
I think there have also been, in the past, people who've said, I'm not willing to go near this with the twenty-foot pole unless the town's behind it. Because they know that there's been contentious issues, not necessarily Wolf's Neck. Any property owner who has been looked at aside being like, I don't want to get in the middle of this. So we almost need to say, yep, we're behind this, this proposal. If, for probably for a lot, I would assume for Wolf's Neck or for any property owner to want to get in the middle of it.
Yeah, I think it's careful about when we say we're behind, that, that can imply different things, different contexts, different people. I'm behind it means I'm paying for it. I'm behind it means we've already cleared it and it's great, good to go. I'm behind it is, well, this is a curious idea. Let's see how it goes to the next, you know, that could be a wide range. So I think we want, I think, um, Adam mentioned the word ascent, which is, we're not disagreeing that this is a pathway to consider.
Right.
And, and I'm seeing five of the nodding heads. I know you're in favor, Counselor Bradley. So I, I think that, um, you know, I think the ascent portion, which is, this is a reasonable plan, which, uh, we've had various degrees of prior to this, but this one i- seems reasonable. And there's outside consultants who are providing, uh, foundational reality about how it's going to happen. And I don't think there's, uh, I mean, individually for me, I don't think there's a whole lot of risk here in asking Wolf Neck for, uh, their participation in what it would take for them to consent to it. I don't, I don't think that's a, uh, a pressured discussion. At least, eh, I'm not seeing it that way. And I'd, I'd kind of defend that if anybody said, we're putting pressure on Wolf Neck. No, we're, we're asking them.
But can I, can I just, I mean, as I've gotten closer and closer to the end, I've gotten cold feet. And I have not cold feet, I still think this, we, we need to do this and, you know, eh, but I, I realize it could fail, right? So I want to keep my powder dry. You know, I want there to be, uh, the, the independent consultant who looks at the final estimates of all of the issues that are still ahead of us. And then gives us their opinion that this, this is a risk worth taking. Only reason I bring that up is because that's going to cost us a little bit of money. It's not going to be free. The guys I, that I've been working with are B I W, they're local residents. They've put a lot of time into this for, for volunteers. I don't think they want this job. That's not the point. The point is that the, that the person I think that we need, Adam wants to have a, a, a geotech guy to look at the final, uh, calculations and say, yes, no, he shouldn't have done it this way, he shouldn't have done it that way. Whatever you do when you review an expert, I want the same thing to happen with respect to the, uh, calculations with respect to buoyancy, tide, uh, you know, transport down that three-rail, um, system. So that at the end of the day, we can say, this is a reasonable risk. We, we didn't go off the handle because we were trying to get rid of this problem. We did it the right way. Then if something goes wrong, it goes wrong. In that regard though, some of the recommendations that we have going forward before we would assent to this are indemnification, insurance, all the things you would want to have if you were going to see a commercial project go on that could have a negative result. So those will all be in front of you the next time you see this, if, if we get to that point.
Uh, I think unofficially you have that, uh, ascent.
That's all I need, thanks.
To continue with the conversation and.
Are you, are you all happy with me going to the farm and presenting this with maybe Peter and Adam?
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Are they going to make you honorary captain when they do launch it?
I'll take anything at this point. You know, you're seventy-seven years old, you're sort of sliding off into the, right Bobby?
I think he's going to be the honorary ships facilitator. When they get seized at their first port of call. They called in to negotiate them out of, uh, yeah.
Do you know what it took to launch this boat? How dare you?
When they're seized by the Egyptian authorities transiting the Suez Canal for running aground and, uh, Ed will be called in to, to negotiate, I think, yeah.
All right, so we had a suggestion earlier that we use maybe the remaining time up to nine o'clock to continue discussion on ARPA allocations. We took a vote to, uh, direct the staff to accept the funds through the most flexible, um, portal, portal category to minimize the amount of reporting that we have to do. That does not preclude us from spending it on other, uh, activities besides general government services, assuming that that comes with additional reporting requirements. And the finesse of those details is obviously way down in the regulation. But I don't believe we've actually boxed anything out from what we may or may not want to do. And we've, uh, given some flexibility. We may choose to get very specific, again, which, which may involve, um, specific reporting if we're, if we're allocating to a sub municipality grantee. So, um, I'll just reiterate again that the, the discussion started with, um, the concept that a smaller group would come up with a shortlist of suggestions just to stimulate the conversation, which is what was in my email. Uh, not as a definitive list, certainly far from something that would be called the final recommendation. But it was meant to hone down the conversation to consider dialing in or dialing out a little bit on, on those suggested uses. Which was in contrast to the possibility that we continue the conversation up here at the council to entertain different ideas, different models, different suggested pathways, uh, which could end up taking, which very likely would end up taking a fair amount of, of, uh, time going forward because of our meeting schedule and, you know, more than two of us can't sit down for very much at all without having a public meeting, which has to be noticed and recorded, blah, blah, blah. So, um, that was the reasoning behind having a small suggested, uh, list of, of things to discuss. If there is an appetite to move away from that and have a much more elaborate involved conversation, then, you know, I, I don't think we've precluded that at all. Uh, I would, uh, suggest that we wait for the chair to return, uh, to set that, um, pathway. Uh, because I know that Counselor Pilch has some, um, keen ideas on what, on what we may want to be doing with that. So I wouldn't want to make a decision tonight about which way we're going to go. But that's the context of where those suggestions came from in the email that I sent over the weekend. Counselor Lawrence?
Yeah, um, one of the things you had on there was F C S. Has anybody asked them how much they actually need?
No. No, we haven't, we haven't done that because we haven't held out an opportunity for what we may or may not have. That was just a, a ratio to get the conversation going. Excellent question, we absolutely should be asking them that.
Because they may need a lot more than what, I mean, I, I view these funds as kind of being to help the town, but people.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
Specifically, so.
So two things that F C S has communicated with us, and these are both very recent and you'll hear about them in our budget presentation at upcoming meeting. They did increase their request for funding by ten thousand dollars for their human service agencies because of additional costs this year. And a recently identified cost, um, for the resettled refugees, the new Mainers at the Freeport, eh, at the, uh, ends on, in Freeport on Route One South has been transportation that they've identified a hole. Um, and they've been talking with R T P, which is a nonprofit transit provider separate from Metro, about providing shuttle service two to three times a week at a cost of about sixty thousand a year.
Six how?
Six zero. And half of that being in Yarmouth and half of that being in Freeport. So the initial conversation was, is that something the towns would look to cover those two items? It's not in our budget because.
As an example of what we may or may not want to do.
As an example, so I've got seven, I've got forty thousand dollars in requests just that they've already communicated to us like as basic, we might need these needs. Never mind things that would be nice to give back to community members who were, who have been damaged by the current economic situation, so.
When, when we look at people who've been damaged by not only the current economic situation, but, uh, struggling in the past, we, we had a discussion earlier about our elderly people in town. And I don't know if some funds would help with this that could, could at least give them some relief that is, is, uh, they need.
Fantastic point. I should have mentioned, I didn't. That's also in the ten thousand dollar increase was the aging, uh. Yeah, aging, it's not aging in place now, it's, uh, age-friendly Freeport, I think. But yes, what was originally the Aging in Place program. So it would be a perfect thing to go back to them and say, what, what else could you do with additional money for that, for that program?
To me, that helps a lot of.
Thank you. I think, I think we're going to have that discussion through the budget process and we should definitely have it with them before you decide how to spend any of this, I think, so.
Counselor Pillsbury?
I mean, my looking at it is that it isn't an unlimited amount of money, but it's not inconsequential either. And we've got some things that, you know, everyone's going to have an idea of how they want to target this. But to me, the important thing is helping people who have really been economically disadvantaged who are struggling with heat, rent, uh, just cost of living. We also have this ambitious visioning project coming up that is going to be of benefit to the entire town. You know, that's another pool that I thought was important to include. And then just a broad infrastructure, if there are projects. I mean, I just think that the more we can kind of outline the big buckets that we want to try to use, I think that helps guide the conversation once we move past there. And that was, that was the intention, I think, you know, when we were having the conversation. And that's where, where I feel, you know, especially the people who have been economically disadvantaged. I mean, that is a priority to me. But those other two buckets, you know, we can play with. But overall, this is intended to support the town, the residents of the town and, you know, get some positive change.
Counselor Lawrence?
One of the other big items is we have these two bridges that are coming in. And part of the, part of that and the D O T helping us by knocking down what the cost is building the trails. So I don't know if that was part of your downtown visioning bucket, but.
Right below the surface, but not identified. Because I didn't want it to be too much like, this is John's list. I was trying to just throw out ideas.
Yep, okay, so that, that's something else that we.
Excellent idea, I'd support that, sure.
Start looking at funding for.
Yep, yep. Counselor Daniella?
That was just what I was going to say. I, I like your three buckets. I think it's, I know, I think it's great and how you've laid it out. I mean, I think we can talk about percentages and everything, but we do have a Connect Freeport work group who have been doing a lot of great work behind the scenes where, you know, you've got thirty percent for infrastructure project for the town. I would suggest that that would be, they could do a lot of studies. They could figure out, hey, this is where we could put this trail. We could do this kind of a sidewalk here. I think that would be a great use to set the groundwork for how we're going to improve the town going forward. So I would say that could be the infrastructure project, personally.
Complete Streets, or Complete Streets, I mean, yeah.
Connect Freeport subsection of, Subcommittee of Complete Streets.
Okay. Well, um.
Yep.
Just, I, I do like that a smaller subgroup got together, came up with the ideas. So I'm not suggesting that we go completely away from that. I think if you guys met again before the next one, dialed it in a little more, however, you know, we could stay the course. Makes sense to me.
Okay, that's good feedback. Assuming, I think it's good feedback, assuming Counselor Pillsbury and Bradley would wish to continue, uh, to talk about that. Right. Okay, so, uh, we are at quarter nine and I think we're ready for, uh.
Move we adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
And we have a second?
I just, I've mentioned it.
Second, get it on.
Move and say, all in favor? All right. Nobody objects to adjourning. Six to zero, Chris, that was the last vote.
It's battle time.
It's what?
It's battle time, they get out at nine. It's a joke that the select on the panel, they don't work class. Their meetings ended, doesn't matter if they got through. Doesn't matter, we didn't finish the agenda.
All right, hand her the, yep. Yes. Grindel, G R I N D L E. No, it's.
Yeah, we do.
Barry, I think, is it Barry or Barney? You guys are all over the map on this.
Was it Barry or Barney or B J?
There you go, that's good.
Grindel!
Thank you, Chris.
We need to help our lifelong residents.
Yeah, those, I mean.
Definitely. I forgot how the speaker is.
I forgot, I hope the speaker's good.